And it's really good to see everybody here today. It's a beautiful day and my mic not on. There it is, it's on now. And it's good to have everybody here on this day. We've got people here from everywhere and that's good and we'll talk more about that here in a little bit. And it's good to have some staff here and also some visitors. And especially good to see you out today on this holiday. I know a lot of people don't get out on the holidays, but it's good to see everybody out today on holiday and it's very good to see you. And I know some of you want to know what the holiday is, but today's my birthday, that's why it's a holiday.
Happy Birthday!
That's why it's a holiday. I had to say that, I thought that I was hoping that-
What am I missing here?
I was hoping that'd get a laugh.
You did get a laugh.
But anyway, it's good to see everybody here today. Alright, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask Tim Tatum if he'll do the invocation and Dan Quinn if he'll do the pledge to the flag. If everybody will stick, please stand.
It's good to see everyone here today and it's good to see people that are willing to take time out of their busy schedule to come out and just take part in county businesses as we conduct it. And let's just, I'd like to take a second to welcome our visitors here today that are from out of town and glad to have you all here. Make yourself at home and don't be strangers. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. "I do Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Lord, we just thank and praise you for all you do for us, Lord, for the many blessings of life that you give to us each day, and Lord, for this opportunity that we have to serve this wonderful county of ours and serve the citizens of Franklin County. As we go through this meeting today, we ask you for wisdom and leadership and guidance in everything that we say and do. And Father, as we conduct this meeting, I pray that everything that is said and done is pleasing in your sight and accordance with your precious will. And you use most holy and precious name, I pray and ask it all. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're going to ask for the approval of the agenda and we're gonna do that, but we're gonna have to, I wanna make an amendment to the agenda because the very first thing we're gonna do before we do consent agenda or anything else is we need to go into a closed session. And we're gonna get off schedule a little bit, but we're gonna ask everybody to bear with us. We've gotta go in a closed session to take care of some business that's very, 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 did I say it was very important to our meeting today? So we're gonna do that, so we need to amend the agenda and I need to go ahead and get a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Second?
Alright, all in favor? Madam Clerk, we do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Ms. Smith, will you read it?
I will, sir. I would move that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors go into a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A5, Discussion Concerning Perspective Business or Industry or the Expansion of an Existing Business or Industry.
Second.
Alright, got a second on that? Madam Clerk, we need to do a roll call vote on that, please.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Alright, we'll be back shortly. We're going in closed session and we'll be back in just a little bit. We've got to go back into regular session, out of closed session, so Ms. Smith, if you will read that and we'll take a motion on that.
I will, Mr. Chair. I would vote to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Second.
Second. Alright, Madam Clerk, we do a roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Alright, I'm gonna ask the county administrator, he's got an announcement to make, and then the board's gonna do a vote on that, we'll take a vote on it, and we'll go from there. I think you're gonna be excited about this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, those watching online this afternoon for today's meeting. It's a good day to be in Franklin County. Of course, it was a good day to be in Franklin County several years ago, and I know many of our citizens over the last few years have wondered regarding the progress of Traditional Medicinals, a medicinal tea company, one of the leading traditional, or medicinal tea companies rather, in the country in their investment in Franklin County for their facility for new jobs and investment. So we have an update today for the public and certainly would like to announce a $47 million investment by Traditional Medicinals here in Franklin County, 57 new jobs, average salary 70,657 per year. So a tremendous update. I know our public are very anxious, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for this announcement, if you will, or our progress of the project, I should say. A groundbreaking will be scheduled in the coming weeks, in the very near future, with a projected timeline of the completion of some footings this year, first quarter next year actually building, construction, and then with a projected timeline of that construction being completed next calendar year. And so we're excited as staff and really appreciate the relationship and the partnership that we have made with Traditional Medicinals. And, Mr. Chairman, that's our positive news this afternoon, and I do think in that partnership, the board has a motion before you to continue this partnership for this project.
Alright, that's a really good announcement that I'm tickled to death to be a part in, but before we're gonna make this official, I need a motion, and you have that, whichever one of you all want to read that, Traditional Medicinal, the motions before you. Mike?
I don't think I have the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I've got it here. Oh, here, you don't start your head one.
Thank you. "I move that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator, county attorney, and industrial development authority chair to finalize and execute a local performance agreement, a site access maintenance agreement, and to participate in the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement as a party alongside with Traditional Medicinals and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Additionally, staff and the county attorney are directed to proceed with recording the revised plat and completing the transfer of the property deed in accordance with the local performance agreement." How exciting is that? Thank you.
Exactly. Need a second?
Second.
You got seconds all over the place. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes, yes. I had a man today at lunch and he said, "When y'all gonna do something out there at Business Park?" And I said, "Soon, I hope." That was my answer, "Soon, I hope." And this is for you, buddy. Jerry knows who I'm talking about. So it's good news. When do you all wanna speak? Drake?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna speak to the folks who are here.
Please do, please do. You've talked to us, you've talked to the people. You're viewing right in the camera.
First off, I won't apologize if that took so long, but you know, this is important business for your county representatives and so they needed to, you know, review these documents and consider this project. At our company, one of the founding values is gratitude. We like to begin our meetings, as you began yours today, with your invocation. We like to begin our meetings always with an invocation of gratitude. We don't take this work for granted. We believe that we've been called to do this work, it's important work, and we feel like we've been called here to Franklin County. I've never felt so welcomed here, as I have, I mean, I've never felt so welcome as I have here. It's really quite remarkable. You guys have something unusual. Your culture in this community is quite special, and I'm really delighted to be able to create a partnership between all of our folks in California and this community here. We've been doing this a long time, we're good at it, we're growing, we're taking this very serious, we've been taking our time with it, and now we're ready. And we have committed, as you heard, a significant investment, and we're gonna grow here and we're gonna, we're gonna prove to you all, we're gonna demonstrate to you the kind of people that we are and why we're so excited to be here. So you're gonna see more of us and hear more about us as time goes by. And I'm here today with, well, let me back up. Over the course of 51 years, we've had four leaders of this company. I was the founding CEO and two of the other CEOs are here today. That's how important this is to us. We have three of the CEOs over the course of the company's whole history have come today because it's historic for our company. It's really, really important. So thank you so much for your hospitality and your generosity of spirit and expect to see more of us. Thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, while our guests are here, I'd like to introduce, of course, that was Mr. Drake Sadler, founder and initial, the first CEO of Traditional Medicinals. And guys, if the whole project team, including our Franklin County local team, if you all stand for the audience, please, we'd like to recognize you. That's Joe Stanziano, the CEO, Gary Gatten, the prior CEO and project manager here for the Virginia site, Simon Rutroff, project engineer with Parker Design Group, and of course Jill and Bill Hume with Interactive Design Group, who are lead architects and managers for the site location on this project. I shared with them earlier, I was so pleased that they're using Franklin County resources, our Franklin County residents, as architects, as engineers, and we just look forward to the continued good work and partnership as we break ground just in a matter of weeks.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
He has a lot of tea, so-
I love it. Y'all come bearing gifts, we love that.
Thank you. Any of you other-
I'm getting used to drinking tea. You're gonna be making the load.
Joe, any of y'all got, y'all good?
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we wanna thank you all again. I'm excited, the whole board's excited, and we wanna welcome you to Franklin County and want you to know that if anything we can do, we're, our doors are open, staff is here and they know how to get in touch with us, and we're excited to see the growth and the expansion and the growth in the Business Park. And your building, your building design is beautiful, it's beautiful, and we're excited to see that. We're excited to see that, and we're finally glad that we can make the announcement and people out there in the community knows that we haven't been dragging our feet, that things have been going. County staff, Danny, she's worked hard at it, and all yous others, the folks here, and we're happy, we're really happy. Thank you. Alright. Alright, let's go to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before the board votes on the consent agenda, a couple of things I just wanna point out. Item number four, Old Chapel Road Collection Site Bid, there's a revised executive summary before you. The bids came back in yesterday, I will say they are on budget, in fact, under budget, I believe, for that collection site bid award. And then the comprehensive plan adoption, I know many of you were able to get some comments back to staff. This, we have spoke with Lisa Cooper, there's no rush today on the approval of the comp plan until we can incorporate some of those edits. And so if we can, Mr. Chairman, we can have that back at the July 15th agenda, we could just put it back on the consent agenda. And of course, staff has responded, I think, to some inquiries on some of the other with some information, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have on the consent agenda.
That's good, I appreciate that, thank you. Alright, board, what's your pleasure on this consent agenda?
I'd like to pull number four, Mr. Chairman.
Number four? Alright, and one else? Or is number four your question, is it something we can deal with today or is it something you need to get with staff about?
Where the bids came in late, I just wanted to give Jeff or Steve a chance to speak on these, give an opinion, and I had a couple of questions myself.
Are y'all prepared? Jeff, Steve? Come on up to the podium, please.
Jeff, were you satisfied with the bids that came in for this?
I am, I am. They're not what we were looking at two years ago when we did initial estimates with La Bella, but we've seen increases in paving and we've seen increases in equipment cost, so that accounts for it.
That was my one question, is I know we had done them a lot cheaper in the past, but so this site will be paved?
It will be paved, it will have three compactors, it will be a full-service site.
And I went and met with Jeff and Steve and we looked at some of these and we gotta do the other one in Snow Creek, and it was good because we already owned the land for this one, we didn't have to buy any land, and I don't know if any, just a blank statement, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if any of y'all have been in the landfill in a while, that thing is filling up fast, and we need to be moving towards these sooner rather than later because once that one fills up.
Yeah, we need to get control of our trash flow.
I've had more complaints over dump sites in the last month than I have since I've been here. And it's time, we have a good plan going down there, hope to move forward with the next one soon.
Once we can move forward and get Snow Creek, that will basically take care of that side of the county. We'll be able to pull all the dumpsters and get all the illegal dumping away, and then we'll move on.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
While we're talking about getting control of these sites, Jeff, while I got you there, we had, I had to call you last, called Steve about the site on Naff Road. If we don't get a little bit better control of that one, the property owners don't like to smooth it.
Were you referring-
There's really no way I can control Naff Road?
I know that, but I guess what I'm saying is we're gonna have to make an effort to, I don't know how you're gonna do it, I can't tell you how to do your job. Part of the problems over there, part of the problem over there is bears. They're dragging it back up in the woods, the bears.
Right, right.
And I don't know how we can control those, and they got cameras over there, the property owners got cameras over there, and the bears are dragging the trash back up in there. Are those dumpsters are not bear-proof, are they?
No, no, we haven't had trouble with that site for bears in the past. What we've had at that site is people-
People illegally dumping.
Tires, sofas, everything in the world, and we're just across creek from Renoke, literally, it's across the creek.
Little, that's right.
Yeah. We can talk about Metwood in the future, that's on the list.
Okay. We're talking about that.
And to that point, Mr. Chairman, maybe we need to have in our work session, talk about realigning maybe our priorities on how we're moving on some of these projects that are floating out there and talking. I think we should maybe talk about it and point staff in the direction of where our priority is and where this would be one of my top.
Is it suitable for everybody that we can put it on the work session?
Absolutely.
I think maybe staff gets wound up in all these things that we talk about all the time and maybe a little direction would help. Wouldn't you agree, Chris?
That would be welcome, Mr. Mitchell, yes.
I think that would be a great use of our time on Thursday.
And Nick, are you talking about in consideration of just global priorities and what should be at the top?
I'm talking, I guess-
Or just confined to-
We should be putting these man sites at top priority over talking about some of the other things that are floating around.
Gotcha.
And I'm not trying to pick on any certain one.
Right.
But these should be priority.
We do need to get control of some of this.
Yes.
And I will be ready to talk to you guys on the 24th if need be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else?
Are you okay with this now?
I'm completely satisfied.
Alright, we'll put it back in.
Yes.
Alright, anybody else? Alright, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I would introduce a friendly amendment to exempt number five for the July meeting.
That's right, I forgot about that. We do need to exempt that till our July meeting. Number five, the comprehensive plan adoption. Okay, with that being said, Madam Chair, you got that exemption in there, don't you?
Yes, I got it.
Will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Alright, VDOT, Brian, is he here? He's not here. Oh, we got Robin here today.
Yeah, Brian asked me to give the report today.
Oh, there he is, he's back there.
He's hiding.
He dumped on you.
He did.
Shame on you, Brian. What's your problem?
Well, thank you all for having us this evening with you. Happy Birthday, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So we're still doing our ordinary maintenance, as you all know. You have our report there, we're working on our gravel roads, potholes, doing some mowing, still working on that brush, trying to get that stuff under control. You have the agenda or our list here, but I wanted to show you a couple of things that had changed. On Route 640, Six Mile Post, we had that box culvert being replaced, and we had the wrong dates. They've actually changed the dates to July 7th through August 7th. It originally had said it was gonna take three months, but luckily that's not the case, it was completely wrong, so. Then we have an additional Naff Road Bridge replacement that's gonna be coming up that did not make the agenda. We are still working through the detour map for that one, and we will be getting back in touch with you guys and asking for a letter of concurrence at some point in the near We've been working today quite a bit on some of our storm damage that we had last night. I know Brian and I spoke with Chief Fowler this morning and he was telling us that they had to do a swift water rescue last night on Coles Creek, so that was, I'm sure, quite the ordeal. We have currently Route 788 Dry Hill Road is closed in the Callaway area. It should be open this evening, and then we have Route 748 Turner's Creek Road that is also closed, and that one may take a few days. It's pretty extensive damage out there. We also have Route, let's see, Do Run Road and Ashburn Tavern Road are both closed, and we hope to have both of those open this afternoon, too. So they're diligently working on those things. 705, where we're doing the bridge replacement, was scheduled to close today, and luckily, well, not luckily, the damage came, but luckily we were out there and were able to get the signs in place because we've had some extensive damage out there around that bridge also. As far as our land use projects, we do have a closure on Frontage Road, F 615, that's closed for utility work, there's additional ways around it, so it's not a big issue, and that road will be closed for at least 30 days. And then the rest of our construction and land use permits and stuff are listed here, and I'll be happy to take any questions if you have any. I know you guys are running a little late today, so I'm trying to keep it brief.
We had that meeting last week-
Yes, sir.
-in regards to the golf carts and four-wheelers over in Coop's Cove area.
Yes, sir.
Did you find anything, do you all need a, you're going to have, or what do y'all need us to do?
Brian can speak to you a little better. He's the one kind of taking care of that one.
There would be a real problem with that.
What happened to you, buddy?
I was gonna get out of this.
Huh?
I have shingles and I'm dealing with that, so that's why I'm here in my-
I thought you got a whipping-
My summer attire.
I thought you got a whipping because you told her she's gonna have to do it today.
Yeah, it certainly has felt like that. So we do understand that it's what, the 35 mile per hour speed limit for crossings, 25 on parallel routes, and there's just a land use permit that we need to issue, so it's a pretty informal process.
You guys have to apply for the permit, I assume, is that correct?
We'll work through the county.
Yeah, yeah.
You gonna work with the county on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, that was easy.
Alright, well, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be up here and address you in my most informal.
You're fine, buddy. You're fine, we appreciate, appreciate the work y'all have done, you done an excellent job today.
Thank you.
See, you can be replaced, buddy.
I know, I know. I knew you would be in good hands, and I said, "Well, I can't just not show up."
I think you just wanted to come see how well I done, that's what it was.
Okay, he was shaking.
That wasn't a test.
Do you have anything else, anybody?
Anybody got any questions?
Can I just make a quick?
Sure.
Robin?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being with us. I just wanted, coming down here, this is just happenstance, it's nothing you can do today, but I just wanted to make sure that VDOT realizes the degree of flash flooding. It's the first time since I've lived here, coming down 122, that I incurred probably five to six areas of flash flooding. One area I would say was full-fledged flash flooding. And I don't, you know, since I've been on the board, I have not heard us talk about 122 with respect to that. I wasn't expecting it. Once I got in the middle of it, it was quite concerning, so I don't know, I would just encourage VDOT, if you all could just make sure this is in your conversation as you look at roadway structures and so forth.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it was not good.
No, I know, we had a terrible amount of rain. I had reports of six to eight inches in some areas.
Yes, yes, and I'm sure it's pervasive throughout the county.
Yes, it is.
But just traveling 122, and it came up so quickly.
Yeah.
When they say these flash floods are quick, you know, to occur and how hazardous they are.
They are terrible.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Robin.
But the ground's already saturated.
It is, you're right. Anything else?
Thank you, Robin. As a follow-up, I have some property in Faram, and I went up there this morning. Dry Hill Road is a disaster. I tried to go in Turner's Creek and the culvert, as you mentioned, is washed out there. Could VDOT perhaps get back with county staff and give a report of all the road damage-
Sure.
-in that area, because I think there's a lot of people's driveways, roads, et cetera, washed out. I had a tractor that was moved 50 yards by flooding, I lost a-
Wow.
-a small barn, I lost a bridge. I think there's some extensive damage up in that part of the county, so if you all could put together a little report and just shoot it to Chris, I would appreciate it.
Sure. We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Robin.
See, Brian, she can pinch it quite well.
I just told you, you were in great hands.
Just for you all's information, we've had a very unusual year this year around here, I don't know about, I think you all have in California, from what I'm reading about it, the floods, we've had a couple really bad brush fires, one of it went across a mountain, one no more close, one close to y'all's property, but yeah, it's been, it's it's been, it's been, uh, pretty, uh, intense around here this year. And, uh, that, that's what we're talking about, but it's, it'll be all right. It'll be all right, it'll all work out. All right, let's see. Ryan Carter.
Mr. Chairman, as, as Brian comes forward, maybe a pause here, too, again, to thank, um, traditional medicinals and their team. You all are more than welcome to stay through the remainder, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the remainder of the meeting, but we know you all are busy and have a facility to, uh, uh, break ground for and construct, so, um, you're, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're also more than welcome to, you know, uh, adjourn as, as, as you all see fit. We want to be respectful of your time as well. Thank you all for traveling across the country to be with us today for the update on the project. We appreciate you.
Thank y'all very much. If, uh, I, I tell you what, though, really, if you got, if you got five minutes, can you give us five minutes? And we'll take a break and come out there to y'all. If we, if y'all will give us five minutes, please. Well, listen, before they leave, let's take our break right now.
All right. No pressure.
Five minutes, Brian.
They gonna leave.
No.
Let's take our break right now before they leave.
That's what I was going to ask. I was just very surprised that, um, they didn't want to stay for the finance report, and, um...
Don't take it personally.
It's all right. My, my feelings are hurt, but I will, I will find a way to press on. So, Mr. Chairman, for our, our finance report for the, through May 31st, so we have 11 months in the fiscal year, that's going to be about 92% of our revenue that we would expect. So looking at, uh, our overall for the general fund, we do expect, we did anticipate, and we are seeing on the property taxes, uh, below where we would normally be. That's, of course, with the timing of the bills going out. We have a little bit more detail on that on the real estate side. Uh, we are seeing very good collections for the month of June, so, uh, that, that's a positive. We're, uh, but it's just going to look different than what you normally see on a comparison. You're probably going to see higher in, in June than you do May. As far as our other, uh, revenues, they're looking fairly stable, which is a good thing, and so we're seeing everything right about that benchmark we would expect. I will notice as we, we look at that, if you look at your general fund, we have about 96 million in revenues, 111 million in expenses, so that's about a $15 million gap. And so one of the things I wanted to, to thank the board for, sorry for the feedback, I'll back up a little bit, thank the board for is that's why it is so essential for a very healthy unassigned fund balance, because what we have had to use that for is to float cash, waiting for the bills to go out and come in in order to fund operations. We had to basically cover $15 million worth of the general fund over this, this window. So I want to thank the board for all the sound financial decisions that you've made, and sometimes we don't talk about some of those, but I thought it was a good opportunity to point out, when you hear from Davenport and others, what that means, and that's why rating agencies look so seriously on that. So graphically to show that for you, uh, revenue-wise, you can see the gap here in May, that the blue line is way down. What you will likely see in June is the inverse relationship of that, where it'll be a lot higher for, when we have June numbers for you, for, uh, basically our real estate taxes. You see the same thing here on your general property taxes. You can see that we, we have a gap, and so, in our general property taxes, that is related to real estate, and we're looking, that's catching up in the month of June. We're pretty level when you look at other local taxes and our state revenue. There's not a lot of growth there. Uh, it is up, but it is not a lot, it's pretty flat overall. Okay, so real estate tax, just to break that down further, you can see that even more pronounced on the gap. You can see very little collections in May, as you would expect based on that timing. And so again, you will see that inverse relationship for May and June when we, when we present June numbers. Personal property is, is looking good. We've had good collections last two or three months, so we're about, uh, $383,000 year-over-year growth, almost 2% over budget, 1.9% over budget. And so we, we will, we'll meet budget. We're looking right now about, um, a little, about $350,000 over budget. So we've already met budget for the year, so anything over that is good, goes to worth the surplus. Local sales tax is, uh, we had a better month for May, which would be collections for two months prior, so that would be for March collections that we're receiving in May. So it, we're still down, uh, overall for the year, uh, but it was a better month. And so what our hope is, is that we're, we're starting to see some comfort level or release of the uncertainty in the economy with a lot of changes that was going on at the federal level. You're starting to see some hopeful wage growth, you're starting to see some ease on the inflation, and we start to see some spending stabilize. So that was one we will watch. We are still below year-over-year, $303,000 on sales tax. We anticipate next month to meet budget for the year, so we're not concerned there. You see, we're at 95% of budget. That is, uh, over our 92% benchmark, and you can see, of course, May and June typically tend to be on the scale when you look at a 12-month cycle, some of the higher months worth of collections. And so we fully anticipate meeting budget for sales tax for the year. So for meals tax, uh, we had a similar situation. We had a little bit better month for May, uh, for April collections that we received in May. And so it was about, it's still down, a little less than $10,000 year-over-year. We are at 94% of budget, uh, so we're ahead of that benchmark, and we would anticipate meeting budget in meals tax as well by the time June collections come in. So transient occupancy, you can see we, um, we, we, we came a little bit below a historical trend in May, but year-over-year, we're still up a little over $9,000. Uh, so you will see the trend as that as well. June is typically a higher month as you get into the summer season with travel. And so that's going to be, we still anticipate, it's going to be close. We still anticipate we'll be right at meeting budget for transient occupancy tax, but we are ahead year-over-year at this point through, through April for May numbers. So for expenditures, you can see we, we were, uh, up a little bit compared, but overall for the year, when you look at those percentages we showed you on the general fund, we're still below where we anticipate. So we anticipated expenditures being up as part of, of natural growth of the inflationary pressures that we see. You see that graphically by category, same thing. You see that most, a lot are, are very miniscule. You see up year-over-year in a couple of areas, we would anticipate that. Those are your high-intensity areas, whether that's staff or major programs that you would see that would absorb that cost. Health and welfare, same thing. You see a little bit up on social services and CSA. That's also the nature of, we're within budget at this point, uh, for those programs, those departments, but you will, you will see that anticipated increase. There's really no change on this slide from last month, and so we still see our unassigned fund balance after our 20% policy minimum and either previous approvals or reserved funds we've set aside at just 19 and a half million, just under that. We still have our million-dollar budget stabilization, but it did make, want to make the note that $750,000 of that is still dedicated to balancing the capital fund in the new fiscal year, and then $850,000 in the capital reserve. Uh, one item I want to point out while we're on this screen, it was on a cash basis, the school year in surplus is $367,000. And so that is, there's an item, of course, coming up after for some requests, but, um, that has been backed out already of our unassigned fund balance. So I want the board to know that we as staff, we, we back those funds out anticipating that the schools will ask for carryover funds and funding, and so that's not accounted for in your unassigned fund balance, if the board approves any action today. Okay? So economic update, uh, we had a, it went up a little bit for May as far as your CPI. It's 2.4%, it's 2.3% in April. Uh, core inflation is still 2.8%, mostly housing costs that are still driving that. Uh, unemployment remained unchanged at 4.2%. The Federal Reserve is actually meeting today and tomorrow. We will see what they do with, uh, interest rates. I've heard no real guidance one way or the other. My guess is, given what's going on in world events and uncertainty, that there will, they will likely leave the rates the same. I don't anticipate a significant drop in the rate. And, uh, be given, given that, and of course, still the, the uncertainty in the economy, certainly think they'll take a planned approach to any future rate reduction. So it's, uh, the, the one thing that is beneficial to us is we're able to earn interest on that money, uh, which is helpful for us. We, of course, balanced our budget with some of that, but at the same time, the, the tax-exempt bond market rates have gone up nowhere near where the rest of the rates are. So we're probably still borrowing at, at, uh, 4% to 5% as opposed to a 7% for a 30-year fixed mortgage right now. So we've been able to take the benefit of the higher rates for an investment and interest-earning standpoint. We haven't been hit as much on the borrowing standpoint, so that's been good from a cash flow. So state budget update, uh, we've, you've seen this a couple of times. Here's a little bit more detail as we have received these items, once the state finalized its budget. There are a couple of provisions in the state budget for bonuses for local state-supported employees. So for the school division, they, uh, the, the State General Assembly and Governor approved a $1,000 one-time bonus for full-time SOQ-funded employees. And so, of course, what that means is, if you want to give the bonus to all employees, the localities have to come up with the funds in order to do that, and the state usually likes to fund it that way. And so the schools have the same situation, the county does. So what the, the schools are, are looking at funding those, uh, one-time bonuses. They would take the state money for the SOQ-funded, but of course, that's roughly half their employees based on the cost. Uh, and, and of course, the, the school staff will have more information on that. They are looking to, to ask for, uh, to provide that bonus to all full-time and part-time employees. So there will be a request, uh, in the next agenda item for that. And for the school system, their provisions that the state passed, not, not their decision, uh, the state is requiring that they be processed in June, hence the reason for the need to request today. Okay? And, and these items weren't really provided in detail in time for the May meeting, so I want to be, be sure we're getting it in front of you as quick as we could based on when the state passed its budget, and we could get it cycled into all of our agenda items. On the county side, they, uh, the state did not, or locality side, the state did not do a flat bonus. They did a 1.5% of your salary bonus. And so that was for state-supported local employees, which includes your constitutional offices and the Department of Social Services. As usual, then, of course, the, the county would want to look at, and historically, that's been our practice of providing a, a bonus to all employees to be equitable. And so what, uh, what we have looked at is providing that for you at your July 15th meeting. We have more time on the county side. The, the requirements for the county side are that the bonuses have to be provided in July if you want the state reimbursement, not June. And so we have another month. We're thankful for that. We would really prefer the rest of the month to see how the fiscal year come, uh, finishes out and to give you a better projection on year-end surplus and, and what that may look like for future commitments. And so that the bonus would be paid on the June salaries before the 3% is applied, and that's the state requirement, that's not the county requirement. That's what the state said in all the guidance we've received, and that's what we would receive reimbursement on for those state-supported local employees. The estimated cost is approximately $315,000 local after you back out the state reimbursement. And so, um, that would be an item with year-end surplus we would bring to you in July. We just wanted to bring it to your attention now, so when you see the agenda item, it's something to be thinking about if that's something the board would support, and of course, staff will have a better idea of final numbers uh, once we get to that July meeting. Okay? And another thing we had, had mentioned to the board last month is we, we have several, it's a good thing, it's a good problem to have. We have several grants or awards that have, uh, staff has diligently pursued and received at, to the tune of millions of dollars, just over $12 million, that, uh, we need to appropriate. And we're now to the point and stage in those projects, we're ready to spend money. Uh, some of those actually have already started, and so we, uh, but by state code, we are required to hold a public hearing to amend the budget for anything over 1%. And $12 million exceeds 1%. So what we would look to do is hold a public hearing at the July meeting for appropriation back to this fiscal year that would end, will end June 30th for, for these particular grants here. Uh, the other thing we will look at, it'll be a subsequent conversation with our school system on the literary loan funding for their middle school project. We can see where we're at, we might lump some of that funding in as well in the appropriation rather than have to hold a separate one. And so that'd be something that we'll be looking at for numbers for your July meeting. But didn't want that to be the first time you've seen it, this is the plan. It's, it's good thing, it's money that we've received, uh, from, from various state granting agencies, millions to the tunes of millions of dollars that the local taxpayer doesn't have to absorb. And so all of those are facility projects, infrastructure projects, broadband, all of those things. So very, very good, uh, very good situation for the county. And then just a reminder for next week, we do plan to hold, I think we already talked a little bit about that, I think Mr. Mitchell did with the, um, the collection sites. So we have a Capitol Work Session next week, and so Davenport will plan to be down for discussion and an analysis. And we'll, we'll talk about major capital projects. I think that'll be a very good time for the board to give guidance on what the priorities are, what it would look like for an interim financing, and then how staff can move forward working with Davenport in order to start to accomplish those. And then, of course, we also plan to have a discussion, public safety, department capital for sure, but fire apparatus specifically. Uh, there are a couple of, uh, outstanding items that we need to determine what we do on replacement schedule. We, of course, continue, still have the leases for the three fire apparatus that are still, that they don't, they're not paid off until 2028. Do you want to pay that off early? And, and just look at that apparatus replacement schedule, among other things, in the capital arena. So, that, Mr. Chairman, I am done with the finance report. We're happy to answer any questions.
Brian, when you bring forth, uh, next month to talk about those bonuses, could you please include some specific examples?
Okay.
As to who are state SOQ employees and who, and who isn't, and how that will affect with part-time employees and so on and so forth?
Okay, for the, um, for the school system, uh...
For us.
For us, okay.
Because the schools is different, that's 1,000 across the board, right?
It is, and they're the SOQ, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, those are the SOQ.
So, thank you.
But ours was for state-backed employees as well?
That's correct, state-supported local, so it's pretty much, um, most of the constitutional office employees and Department of Social Services. So you would like, um, some information of just the breakdown of the cost as far as what we're receiving from the state on reimbursement and what the full, yes, we have that, and we will certainly provide that, Mr. Mitchell, in all the detail.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is called another unfunded mandate.
Well, I guess it just boils down to whether or not you're going to do it or not. I, I see what you're saying about the unfunded mandate, but the state's saying they're going to take care of their positions, and if you want to take care of yours, it's up to you.
Yeah.
Because I, I guess, truthfully, if you took it from the state, you could just take it to those employees, and the rest wouldn't get it. I guess that's the part that's up to us, so...
That is option, yes, sir.
Anyone else down there? How about up here?
Brian, just to clarify, if I may, I want to make sure I heard you right at the beginning of your report, talking about, um, the revenues.
Yes.
And how, as we move through this month and close out the year, the fiscal year, that you're expecting, um, the, the, uh, revenues to rebound?
Yes.
We had a, we had, you know, a significant shortage going into May, correct? I mean, I, I say significant, we had collection issue.
Yes.
And so are you saying that you're expecting that we're going to have a rebound that even continues to bring that up in addition to, um, any further, um, reduction that we see?
I think we will see a better cash flow position.
Okay.
It's still too early due to the lateness of real estate for me to give you guidance on our collection percentages improving. That was the concern, that we were behind.
Yeah.
We're still, we were still seeing soft real estate before, but now because of the delay in the collection, I, I'm a little, it's a little struggle for me to do a comparative. So I think once we can get to the end of June, after the June 23rd due date, and I can see some reports on the, the whole tax levy that is out there and what's remaining outstanding, Ms. Smith, it'll give me a little bit better answer for you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood you correctly.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, that was good clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on meals tax, Brian, I was reading in the Wall Street Journal, uh, more people are cooking at home now than eating out even during COVID, and there's been a decline in meals tax across the country, and they look for that to continue moving forward. It's interesting data.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have seen, uh, in general, uh, several articles about localities being concerned about meals taxes in particular, especially towns and cities that rely a lot more on that than counties do. That's a big concern in their budgets, and you do see overall right now a general pullback in spending. So I, I, we're hoping that, that period of instability and, and inflationary pressures eases over the next three months, and then you start to see that tick back up, but you're, you're right. And we're seeing that in our numbers, and we're seeing that across the state, and, and Ms. Carter, you're exactly right. I'm seeing that nationally in some news articles about just the pressures on local governments as the tax revenues are moderating, to say, to say the least. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, buddy. All right, I don't see Dr. Sears here, but I do see, uh, Ms. Tunnel here.
I apologize for Dr. Sears. He had a family emergency, and he is out of town, um, dealing with that. So you stuck with me, I'm sorry.
I hope everything...
Happy birthday, by the way.
I hope everything, thank you. I hope everything's going well with Dr. Sears.
Yeah, so do I, yeah. We'll just keep him and his family in our prayers. Um, we'll just keep him and his family in our prayers and.
Okay, thank you.
But I have three appropriation requests, I don't know, um, depending on your preference, I can present them one by one or present all three of them, however you would like to proceed.
Just go ahead and do all three of them.
Okay, all right. Um, one is the, uh, Virginia, Virginia Literacy Act. In twenty twenty-four, the state awarded, um, the school system two point four million dollars for the implementation and, uh, process of the Virginia Literacy Act. It's a three-year project. Um, the first year, we spent two hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven, seventy-eight to fund the implementation and training of teachers, which left two point one million dollars. Um, that was set back from the auditors, um, knowing that that money had to be carried forward for years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So we are asking for that two point one five million in appropriation to, uh, fund the literacy program for this year and next year. So far this year, we've spent, uh, a little over a million dollars, um, maintaining and implementing the literacy act, so this money would go to cover that.
I may, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
We're here.
Um, on the, is that pot of money highly restricted?
It is highly restricted.
Okay.
Um, there were three areas that we could use that money on. One was the implementation of the program, one was for high-intensity tutoring on students who were falling back in their reading, and the other was to address chronic absenteeism.
Okay.
So the funds have to be sent, spent on those three, um, three different items. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And this does not require any local funds?
No, this does not require any local funds, this is all state funding. And they've never awarded funds like this before to where they award you all the funds upfront, but it's for a three-year project. This is something new that they, they've not done before, but. So we are asking for that, that two point one million to be appropriated back to the school system for that, for that, um, project. Um, the other is, um, of course, Brian's talked about the bonuses, we're only getting funding for the SOQ bonuses, and it's full-time, and they specified a thousand dollars. Um, of course, that only covers about half of our employees, we would need another six hundred and sixty thousand for all of our employees to receive the bonus, uh, giving full-time employees a thousand and part-time five, five hundred. Uh, and we are asking for consideration of six hundred and sixty thousand one sixty-four, um, to help fund the bonuses that the state did not fund, so all employees could get the same bonus. And as Brian said, these have to be paid in June, um, and the state really didn't finalize their budget in time for us to get it to you in May, and so I do apologize for the late, the late notice on that. The third request is we have a carryover from last year of three sixty thousand oh sixty-nine, um, that we would like to, uh, request that the, uh, board supervisors provide to the school system. Um, depending on the desire of our boards, those funds will either be used for capital or to help fund the rest of the, or part of the, the SOQ bonuses.
Any question?
This right here, our numbers aren't adding up.
Uh-uh.
What I have here, let me make sure I'm right before I go. Ten. You, you just said six hundred and some thousand for the?
Does the school, the state gave us six hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three to fund SOQ bonuses. For, in order for all of our employees to receive that bonus, uh, it would require an additional six hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and sixty-four.
Why is our number in our book three hundred and sixty-seven thousand?
Think I can answer that, um, Mr. Mitchell. So the school request is for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, that you can see in the discussion portion of the, um, of the section, and again, that's to cover, uh, what they would request from the school board, I think that was back from May, um, Ms. Tuttle mentioned, uh, for those non-SOQ positions. Um, in discussions with Dr. Sears and the staff, uh, with the schools, um, it, it was identified that the twenty-three, twenty-four carryover for the school system is in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven, um, three hundred and seventy dollars, so that's where that number's from. And so in discussions with Dr. Sears, we as staff didn't make the recommendation that we would supply the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars because that would be new money from this board that was not budgeted, but rather, um, if the board so choose, and if it's Ms. Tuttle mentioned, if the school board, uh, whatever use that the school may use either for capital funding or for bonuses, that that carryover funds from the twenty-three, twenty-four, cause those are school carryover dollars, could be utilized for that purpose. And so that would not necessarily be new money, if you will, from the county, but it would be carryover money that the school system has from the twenty-three, twenty-four. And so that's why those numbers, uh, are, are different.
The new money that we're asking is the six hundred and sixty-one sixty-four to fund the bonuses for all school employees?
And so from staff's perspective, from the county staff's perspective, we did not, we're not making the recommendation to this board that our board find those dollars, but rather, if the three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars from the twenty-three, twenty-four carryover, if that could be used for that purpose, that would be a good use of those dollars. But again, that would be a decision that the school board would make once our board, if our board would like to, um, allow them to use the twenty-three, twenty-four carryover.
So Chris, I mean, what, I'm sorry, Nick.
So what we're saying is they're requesting six hundred?
Six hundred and sixty in new money.
And then this, this is, this recommendation comes from, this is the amount of carryover they have, and we don't have to find any extra dollars. Right.
That, that, that's right, unless we wanted to do both, unless the board wanted to do both, and from a staff perspective, that, that's a board decision and not a staff, cause this was not budgeted.
So, and my question might be for you, Ms. Tuttle, um, I remember talks back during the budget time, we were talking about the car rider pickup line at Sontag Elementary, and I'm not, I've never heard whether or not that was gonna be funded in this past year, in this, this year's budget.
That is in the capital budget, that, um, and they are looking at alternatives to, to major construction down there. They think they have come up with a good solution, but it is still in our capital, um, capital CIP plan.
Well, and if I remember correctly, that was somewhere around the tune of three hundred and some thousand, between that and five hundred thousand to do that.
Right, right.
And so, and, but if we make that appropriation and it's left up to, it says, could be used for one-time bonuses or capital.
Right. I will say that in the state, um, wording, we could take that, um, SOQ money that they gave us and divide that by all of our employees, but that would reduce their bo, their bonuses to five hundred and two fifty, um, but that is also an option. We would prefer, of course, to give our employees the full thousand dollars, but we do understand that it may not be an option.
Well, there's never gonna be anybody, whether it be our locality or school systems, who's not gonna look at a, a bonus coming from the state and say, well, sure, that's what we want to do, but my question being is if that capital, if that project at Sontag, that should be taken priority, because all I heard about it during the budget time was, we can't do it, we can't do it, we can't do it, well, now all of a sudden, three hundred and some thousand, and, and I'm not picking on the schools, cause I'm gonna have this same talk next month on bonuses. That, that, just because bonuses come up from this, the state, it shouldn't leapfrog that capital project, and that's my thoughts. So, all right, so the recommendation from you all is carryover funds, they're asking for another six hundred thousand, however, you can take the money that the state's given, split it up.
Yes.
And divide it.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Lori?
Thank you. Um, Chris, Mr. Whitlow, if you could just verify, we're talking about a twenty-three, twenty-four carryover number.
Correct.
What about the twenty-four, twenty-five carryover number that will be known very soon and will have to get some action, hopefully not on the delay that we've had twenty-three, twenty-four? So, um, I don't know if Brian, if, if, if you, um, if you guys are in a position to start projecting twenty-four, twenty-five carryover, um, and how that, excuse me, contributes to this discussion, because, um, I don't look at this as being a three hundred and, or six hundred and sixty thousand dollar variance. I think the carryover could be in consideration unless I'm looking at this wrong. You, you would have to tell me.
Sure, I, I can have Mr. Carter or maybe Ms. Tuttle speak to any projected carryover for the twenty-four, twenty-five, but it is early. Um, the, the quandary, if you will, again, um, and you all had mentioned earlier, the frustration is the unfunded mandate, y'all heard a little bit about this at the VACO meeting last week, where the state, in their whatever wisdom or lack thereof, uh, you know, puts localities in this position of, yeah, you, you can do a bonus, but we're not gonna give you enough money to do everyone. And so we're gonna let you guys be the good guys, or we're gonna let you guys be the bad guys, I mean, that's plain and simple. Uh, and so the more frustrating thing for the school system is, they put a time limitation on it, where our school system has to make a decision this month.
Okay.
And so, uh, you know, we get one more month for what it's worth, I don't know if we're gonna have much of a projection for carryover even for us next month, but it does give us more time. Um, but it really puts school systems in a jam, and, and you've probably read some of the articles of other school systems that are struggling with this statewide. It's very frustrating from a staff perspective, and I understand from a board perspective. It puts, puts everyone in a very, very bad position.
Yeah, I'm not really comfortable projecting a carryover at this point in time. Uh, you still have your audit entries, usually we don't know what carryover is until the auditors are finished, um, October, November, December. Um, so I know I'm not comfortable at this point in time saying we will have any carryover because, you know.
Ms. Tuttle, if I understand correctly, to give the bonuses that the school division wants to give at this time, you need six hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars of new money.
Right.
Okay, and then, Mr. Whitlow, what I understand from you is, you're saying they can use the three hundred and sixty-seven, three seventy of carryovers from twenty-three, twenty-four to supplement what they need, so they would still have a shortfall of two ninety-two, seven ninety-four.
They, they?
If they were gonna give the, the bonuses that, that they currently want to.
That they desire to, but I understand they can give a lesser amount.
Mm-hmm.
If, if they wanted to, and, and, and again, the, the summary is flexible enough because as Dr. Sears had shared, he's having other discussions, I think, with the school system, I think they may have one more meeting before the end of the month, maybe, um, where they would like to use it either for capital or potentially for bonuses that carryover from the twenty-three, twenty-four.
We're actually having a call school board meeting tonight to discuss, to approve our final budget, cause we just got the final cap tool from the state a week or so ago, and, um, and this will be part of that discussion. So depending on the board's pleasure here, um, we'll decide what our school board does this tonight.
If I understand correctly, my, my, my thoughts on this, I don't have a problem at all with the two point four million, uh, for the state literacy act. I don't have a problem with that, even voting on that tonight. I don't, but this other money, did I understand correctly, if we don't do something on that by the end of this month, that they may lose it? Is that what we're understanding? Or did I miss?
We would have to make the decision on giving a lesser bonus, um, or using, if we were allowed to have the carryover, um, using the carryover to go against that, or you just give a lesser bonus.
I'm, I'm, like I said, I don't have a problem with that, uh, literacy fund money, but I don't really want to go, I don't know about the rest of the board, I'm just talking about me. I don't really want to go into giving away any of this other money for anything until after we hear, uh, Brian's report, uh, next month on, uh, on the carryover funds and what he had, what he has to say on whether there, the money's gonna be there. And that's what I'm asking, how, how, if, if it's gonna affect anything, if we wait until our July meeting. Just based upon what you said a while ago and then what Nick was talking about, you know, he's gonna have some thoughts on the, uh, Snow Creek School down there.
Well, it's at Sontag, and that's my thing.
It's been snowing at Sontag.
If you can promise me that that's gonna happen, then I don't have a problem with the rest of it, but we don't get that. And if that money goes there, it's gonna go to bonuses, and that's fine. I understand that.
Currently on our CIP plan, but I do know that the air conditioning unit at the Rocky Mount Elementary School is on Band-Aids, and, um, it could, we could be forced and our hand could be held that we have to replace that sooner than later.
Even more of a reason.
Say that again?
Even more of a reason.
Yeah.
And, and at the end of the day, if, all right, so if they have to cut it back and do only partial bonuses, if we get the numbers back that you're talking about later on, we can do it, you know, and do whatever we want.
We can do it then.
Sure, but they can still all get their bonus now, from the state, they can split it up, just make it smaller.
Partial bonus, they can get the bonus from the state.
Yes.
What about anybody else? Anybody else got anything to say?
Ms. Tuttle, you mentioned, excuse me, you mentioned the air condition at the elementary school, have y'all taken any prices on that in the bids, or?
I know that they have, um, gotten some full luminaries, and they're also working with ABM, um, which is a consulting company to, um, help with maybe looking at solar, um, and some other options for energy savings that would help us there and give us some cost savings. Um, they were very, um, impressed with what our maintenance crew had done to keep those things running. Uh, we do have a very good maintenance department, uh, but it is being held together with Band-Aids, and they have started the process, but we would have to do an RFP on that.
Y'all had estimate of how much on that to go?
Um, we're talking millions.
Or what's on?
I think the last estimate he gave me was over three.
Is this just air conditioning or heat also?
It's the, it's the whole HVAC system.
To unit, then lighters?
Yeah.
They mentioned our CBI.
Is the school system discussing natural gas? We have this pipeline.
Well, we do have ABM now, they are looking at natural gas, they are looking at solar, um, they are looking at, um, LED lighting, I mean, they are going through all of our schools.
Well, I had a conversation with the mayor, and I, I expressed to him, you know, run up gas stood right where you are and promised gas to Rocky Mount.
Right.
From the pipeline for the schools, the courthouse, the hospital, this building, all the, uh, modu, all these companies, uh, you all, as a school, the school board needs to start getting with the town and putting pressure on them to run gas to these schools, that would be a tremendous savings in heating in the wintertime.
That's definitely something I'll take back to our board and to our director of operations.
Yeah.
That was promised, you're right. That's in the minute somewhere. Anyone else?
It appears there are three decisions, one is the carryover regarding the literacy act funding, the second is the carryover for the twenty-three, twenty-four money, and the third is whether we would give them additional money towards the non, um, SOQ employees, right?
That's correct.
Just to be clear, there are three decisions, right?
That's correct.
So, to Ronnie's point, it seems easy to give the literacy carryover to, to do that, but even to do the second carryover, I can't see why we would not want to do that, but the sticking point is not giving them additional money at this point, because we don't know what the carryover will be for, for last year, right? So, so it, uh, my takeaway is it feels like we could give them, grant them approval for the two carryover requests, but not for the additional funding? Is that where we're getting to, or are, are, are we not wanting to give them the carryover, the second carryover request?
Like I said, I'm fine with either, if I'm guaranteed that we have the car rider line at Sontag fixed.
Well, we don't, we don't have any, the thing that bothers me is right now, is I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we don't have no guarantee that the car line's gonna be fixed.
No. And I, but I understand that from their side, too. I'm not picking on anybody, I understand it, but it was a big topic, that was the, one of the main capital things they pushed you in the budget. And then I, whether or not that got straightened out after what Chris presented and the budget we have, whether they want straight, that straightened out, I don't know.
They, they have worked on it, I don't know if it's perfect, but I know that they have addressed some of the complaints at Sontag with the car rider line.
Cause I ride by it and see it all the time, I know what it is, my wife works there.
But, but to my point, if this money gets gone.
It's gone.
Or bonuses, it's gone, and your car line's not gonna get there, and that's why I can't, I don't understand why we can't wait one more month to see.
That's my, my point, too, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, it just gets, the car rider lines just keeps getting kicked, that's been a topic since I came here, but all of a sudden, we can come up with the same amount of money for something else.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm good with the first one.
I think we need to act on them separately, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm gonna need a motion. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I make a motion to appropriate FY twenty twenty-four remaining state carryover, carryover funds of two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Virginia Literacy Act.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Madam Court, we do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, uh, all right, only request for two and three. Alright, on the request for two and three, I need a motion, will you want to table that until July? Or how you want to act for it now? Or do we even need to have to act on it?
Well, and just to be clear, they will still be getting the money from the state, whether we-
That's correct, they will.
-appropriate anything or not.
Well, we appropriate anything, they will be getting their, their portion, this carryover from-
We've already gotten the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We just have to certify that we use it for bonuses.
Yes.
It is here.
And just a straight carryover, something I think this board has historically done. We've always re-appropriated carryover. But to your point, Mr. Mitchell, the school board's going to be tasked with making operational decisions wherein it comes to the bonuses versus capital, which is, you know, I think the Sontag issue is more of a capital project. So, what the schools choose to do with any money that comes back to them, of course, we all know, is the school, under the school board's discretion. And all we can, all we can do is encourage what we saw and heard during budget, you know, as a, as a significant concern.
Well, and this board has went to great lengths the last couple of years to help with the pay plan and everything else. It wouldn't be fair to say that we've done nothing.
Oh, absolutely.
So, and, and, and like you said, Lori, in the past, those rollover monies have gone to capital, for the most part.
The most part they have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've been over backwards for it.
You have, and we appreciate everything that the board has done. I mean, you have actually helped us a lot the last couple of years and we're not unappreciative, you know, but if we don't come and ask for these things for our employees, we don't get them. And we just felt that it was our duty to our employees to at least pursue. And then it's, as you're describing, and not to make you guys out to be the bad guys, you know, but we just felt we needed to ask.
I'm not prepared to do anything else until after I hear from Brian in, in July.
And Brian will have his turn at this next month. Brian will have his turn at this next month.
Yes, sir. Anybody? Okay, I guess it's tabled until next month.
Do you need a motion to that?
We need a motion for that. Table the other two until next, until July.
May I add, Mr. Chairman, that since number two is June-sensitive and so forth, with, with the state requirement, really, that's probably a null and void at this point, I would assume. Because FY twenty-three, twenty-four, then, carryover would, that can be done at any point. But if, if there's any funds to supplement the state bonuses, I understand from the legislation, has to be done-
Has to be done this month.
This month, so-
The six hundred and sixty thousand?
And again, no expectation from-
But that's the expectation, you don't really know that to be a, a real, it's a fictitious number right now, right?
The six hundred and sixty?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I mean, that is a real number, that is the amount that we need to fund all of the bonuses. You know, without the, if we don't use the three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar carryover, this is a true figure.
I saw on the news the other night that the school board had voted to not do something. I, I just heard a snippet.
That was their own pay.
Yeah, they voted not.
Yeah, that was their, that was their compensation, the board's compensation.
Okay, I just didn't hear the complete thing, okay.
That, Lori, I look at that money is new money, staff doesn't, you know, they tell us we don't have it in the budget for it and I'd be against it.
Where are we going to get that money from, Brian? If we go, if we go with it, where's it going to come from?
You were talking about for the bonuses for the school system? Yes, sir. The six hundred and sixty thousand. The only, I mean, we have reserves, including unassigned fund balance that we could pull from right now. We're using budget stabilization, of course, to balance our capital. So, the only thing we could do is dedicate it and then restore with urine surplus. We've had a history of doing that. But we just don't know what that number's going to look like right now. Certainly supportive of, of the bonuses, understand. It's just, we don't have that in a pot of money without the board obligating that to, to assign.
It is unfortunate that the state continues to put us in these situations.
It's unacceptable.
Yeah.
It, it really does put such a burden on us for being the bad guys-
I know.
When we just want our schools to have what you need. And we're-
We understand that.
We're working on that at the state level.
I was going to say, it probably should be the-
With VACO, we're trying to do that.
Yes, indeed.
The top of our legislative agenda this year.
Yes.
Is this point.
Yeah.
It's very frustrating.
Brian, do you have an estimation of what the county portion would have to be for county employees? So, theirs is six hundred, they've already gotten the one-six hundred, so they need-
Right, we've got six hundred and sixty-eight and we need an additional six hundred and sixty.
What would, what would the county's portion of, because the state is doing this for county employees as well, do you have an estimate on what the county's portion of that would be? What is that?
We do. And, and so the state on the, the county side is, is doing the one and a half percent. So, it varies a little bit in how we calculate it from the school system, it's not a flat bonus. So, given that, on the county side, we've only calculated for full-time employees. We haven't considered part-time because how do you calculate a salary on a part-time person? And so, for full-time only, when we back out what we anticipate receiving from the state, it's about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would be the county cost, local cost in order to fund bonuses to all full-time employees.
So, you guys don't have a plan to offer it to part-time employees at all?
We have not looked at that yet. That can be something, if the board would like us to, we bring back to you in July with the cost. I think if we do part-time employees, we would realistically look at a flat bonus for part-time. Doing a percentage on a part-time that's not salaried would be difficult.
So, all in all, we'd be looking at a million dollars, not including part-time for county employees?
Between the two, you're correct, yes, sir.
Are you, this figure that you've come up with, is it for full-time or full-time and part-time?
This is for full-time and part-time regular. It does not include substitutes or tutors. It's only for people who have a regular five-day-a-week schedule. Because we have part-time custodians that may work four hours a day. We have part-time food service workers that work five hours a day. So, they would be getting half of whatever the full-time people would get.
Half?
Yeah.
Who, who was it, Dan, you have a question?
So, Chris, I, I don't understand the time is of the essence issue because it seems like they've gotten the six hundred and sixty-eight for the SOQ employees. They could make a decision, we, we're going to pay that out to the SOQ employees. Now, you only have the second decision later on for the non-SOQ employees and it seems like you could still make a decision post the end of June, whether you'll fund that or not. Why is the funding of the non-SOQ employees tied to the SOQ employees? It feels like they're independent and they could just go forward and tell the state, we're going to pay the sixty-eight to the SOQ employees and that's done.
And that is, that is an option.
Yeah, that, that is correct, Dan, just from the standpoint of previous practice. Whenever the state has done this to the county and to the localities, we have historically, if comp board funding was provided or SOQ funding was provided, we've historically tried to treat all those positions the same in terms of the bonus. And so, not knowing, again, what amount may be with carryover to fund all that, 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 that's just kind of the point, you know, of all of this. And again, the frustration of all of this.
And more than likely, what we would do, rather than just give the SOQ employees the thousand dollars, we would just split it over all the employees.
But again, if I'm hearing the board correctly, Mr. Chairman and, and Ms. Tuttle, you know, the, the state has provided that amount, so the school system could provide the bonuses, although it would be a lesser amount, without any county support for this month.
Right.
And then the concerns with the twenty-three, twenty-four carryover in terms of going towards capital projects for the school system, whatever they may be, whatever facility they may be, I know Dr. Sears is not here, but he's mentioned some of these capital projects. We'll have a better idea in the coming months on the twenty-four, twenty-five carryover as well as the twenty-three, twenty-four for capital projects, if that's the will, you know, of the board. And so, you've already made your decision on the first one. Again, two and three, the board doesn't have to take any action today on either of those. If you do take action on twenty-three, twenty-four carryover, to Mr. Thompson's point, at that point, it's, it's appropriated back to the school system and then, you know, they utilize it as they may. But I'm, I'm hearing a lot of concern, maybe, or some concern, I should say, of, of capital project needs that are still there.
But Dan, just, just keep in mind, it doesn't have to be just the SOQ position. They can take that money and divide it to all of them.
I know, and so I, so I actually understand that and I see that as an alternative, where they could take the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, they could spread it across all the employees. So, maybe each one gets five hundred instead of a thousand, right?
That's correct.
And then you could make a second decision where you're going to, you're going to spend some more money to bring everybody up to the thousand-dollar level. But, but still, they have the green light right now to spend the six hundred and sixty-eight they got from the state-
Right, that's correct.
Any way they want.
Yes, sir. And they could have done that without ever coming and asking us for appropriation. And then decided how to do with their rollover money, how they choose.
That's correct.
That's correct. And in discussions with Dr. Sears and Ms. Tuttle mentioned, I think they felt obligated, you know, again, the, the state put them in this position-
Right.
-as a school board to, to ask locality. And again, next month, we'll be asking, you know, what to do with the situation and-
And then unfortunately, we, we put you in this position, so.
Yeah. It, it is so frustrating.
We appreciate your candor in wanting to be forthwith with it, we really do. But I think the board's made its position clear for right now.
And that's understandable, you know, you, all we ask is that you consider, so we're okay with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to the board, the school board meeting.
Oh, you're going to school board meeting, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle.
Thank you, Ms. Tuttle, alright. Alright, uh- Alright, let's see, Madam Clerk, we're going to move the village plan update until our July meeting. We've already talked about that. Alright, do we need to do an amendment to the agenda to approve that or?
Yes, please.
We do?
Yes, please.
Alright, I need a, I need a motion to the village plan update. Chris told you a while ago that they was getting a couple of answers for some things that come in today. So, to do an agenda update, I'm going to need a motion that this, the village plan update be moved until July.
I'll make a motion that we move the village plan updates to our July meeting.
Thank you, need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Alright, Parks and Rec. Randy, you going to do that or Paul, who's going to do that, or all two of you?
It's going to be a group of us, actually.
All two of you, okay.
Yes, sir.
There's some more here for Parks and Rec Board. Is everybody going?
It's mainly going to be-
Three more here, so it's all five of you going to do it?
Me and Paul and Reba Dillon will be speaking on most of this.
Ms. Dillon, you come on up, please. I can't believe, Tim, you're not going to get involved in this.
I'll just sit back and, and watch for a little while, Chairman, and see how it goes.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. We're here this evening to provide a couple of updates for you on some Parks and Recreation projects. The first is the proposed dog park in Gills Creek that we brought to you in 2024. And the second is a new project request for an equestrian arena at the recreation park in the Snow Creek District. So, very quickly, the items we're going to cover tonight are going to be the proposed park location. I'll be very brief on these. The amenities, construction and maintenance of the dog park facility, the budget and the requests from the Board of Supervisors, and then our path moving forward. In 2024, the board directed staff to proceed with the design and budgeting of a dog park facility on a county-owned parcel that's located off of Lake Watch Center Drive that is adjacent to the existing collection site that's back behind Bojangles. The property is included in the Lake Watch Plantation master plan and is designated currently as an office or a technology park. Given that designation, the site would require a rezone to change the master plan to meet the land use of a dog park. And I don't want that to alarm anybody, it's, it would, it's currently zoned PCD, it would stay PCD. We just really have to change that designation to something that would allow it for use as a dog park. Since the parcel is part of a common plan of development, I also wanted to mention that we would be required to do an engineered plan and that's going to be for erosion and sediment control as well as stormwater. We have engaged an engineer as part of our design due diligence to start that engineered plan. The approximate cost, once we get done, all the way through construction, including permitting, is roughly ten thousand dollars. Very briefly, I'll touch on some of the benefits that a dog park could bring to our community. I won't go through all of these, but I will say it is one of the more highly requested facilities that we have. It's good for pet socialization, physical health for dogs, and also human socialization and creating really a good sense of community. It is a very unique facility for Franklin County. We do have a dog park in Town Limits, but we do not have one in other parts of the community. And we really feel like it's something that could serve not only the Westlake community, but the Franklin County community as a whole. Your typical amenities for your dog park are obviously going to be your fencing. We're looking at a five-foot-tall fence that would really mirror the appearance of the collection site. As with all dog parks, you'll have your double-gated entries with designated areas for smaller dogs or larger dogs. You'll have your shaded areas, benches, trash receptacles and accessible parking. Things to consider in the future would be like if, if this was a very frequenting facility, do we want to consider doing permanent restrooms? We're also looking at the addition of agility equipment as funding allows. So, this is the proposed dog park design that we've come up with, with our engineer. On the bottom right of this graphic, you'll see the asphalted parking lot where users will enter the park. That leads you into the double-gated entry with a large dog area that's about point-seven acres of fenced-in area. And then there's about point-three acres for the small dog area. There is a four-foot fence that separates the two areas and we did lessen the height on that by a foot to really encourage the interaction between users on each side of the park. There's also a large pavilion that'll provide shade and some seating as well, really to just encourage that interaction. Other amenities are going to include your trash receptacles, your pet waste receptacles, landscaping, rule signage and so forth. You'll see kind of on the right side, some grayed-in areas. And basically, that's just showing if we chose to expand this facility to the right side of the site, that we could very easily expand the parking area, we could create restroom facilities. That's nothing we're proposing at this time, but we did want to show that the site could accommodate that if we choose to expand in the future. Mr. Chapman has put together a list of some maintenance and operational tasks that we'll know we'll need to look at, some basic stuff such as removal of garbage and pet waste, checking your trash receptacles, pet waste stations and emptying those, inspection of the facility and its amenities, and working with volunteers and staff as well to ensure that the oversight of the property, we're making sure there's proper usage and rule enforcement. Looking at the budget, we've worked very closely with Ms. Dillon and the recreational development of Franklin County Group to, to buy down this number as much as we can. We're looking at approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand for the total construction cost. Of that amount, recreational development of Franklin County has already fundraised thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, so it's a very significant amount. We're also anticipating sponsorship funding through RDFC, an amount of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, which will leave a maximum funding request from the board at fifty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. I will caution that number a little bit and say, I know Reba's group feels very strongly that once we announce the rezoning of this property, if it was to get approved, that they're going to be able to raise significantly more money and we're going to buy that number down as much as possible. Like I said, I'll let Ms. Dillon speak on that in a minute, but I know they're pretty confident that we can get that number down.
Well, as you all know, this is like two years I've been working on this project, trying to get it approved. And our group, we have people right now wanting to donate money, but we're not taking any more donations because we're holding until you all give us the approval for the rezoning, request for the rezoning. Now, once you all approve that rezoning, I think that we will be able to raise most of the funds that will buy down this project. Now, you all know- Now, you all know that I've always come before you and said, we will basically try to finance it, and I'll do the same thing here. But the thing I need for you all to do is give us the permission to get this property rezoned. Once we can put up a sign of the rezoning for a dog park, we will accept all of the money that's been promised by companies at this point. And then we can come back and say, hey, we are buying down this number.
Just to run through some projected annual maintenance costs that Paul has put together, these are very preliminary, but assuming that we had somebody out there every other day checking on the site, emptying garbage and stuff, the maintenance supplies we would need annually, contracted landscape maintenance and mowing, and also monthly water bills, we're looking at around twelve thousand dollars. That does not include additional support from full-time staff, this would be part-time staffing that would be completing this work, and it also does not include capital repairs or site improvements. So just very quickly, our path moving forward, the, like, the next step will be the submission of an application to the planning department to rezone the property and change the planned use. And that would be either to recreation or civic. That's roughly a ninety-day process with it potentially coming back for your approval in September. Once the master plan has been modified, staff will finalize the budget to include any conditions that may be required during that rezoning process. Donations and sponsorships will need to be concerned, confirmed with Recreational Development of Franklin County. And then the board will be updated about what the local funding amount will be needed. So staff would then complete all required due diligence, that's gonna be our permitting with planning and zoning, anything that we would have that would be required of outside agencies such as VDOT and so forth. And then we'd work to collect our quotes for materials and services to ensure that we're meeting all of our procurement requirements. And finally, park construction would take place, and the facility would become part of our Parks and Recreation system. So our request today is to get consensus of the board to submit the rezoning application to our planning department, and that, like I said, will potentially come back to you in September. And at that point, we would confirm the budget, the funding that's available, and the funding amount that would be requested from the board.
Will you go back about two slides to where that, one more? Fifty-five, two, eighty-one.
Yes, sir, and that's assuming with no additional fundraising activities, that would be the amount at this time.
Brian, if we had to come up with that money, where would it come from? You knew I was gonna ask that question.
Mr. Chairman, I prefer that you not make me so popular today.
Yes, sir.
I think we have a couple of reserves, Mr. Chairman, that we could go to. There's certainly our capital reserve. We do have kind of an infrastructure reserve, we have a couple, of course, we always have unassigned fund balance. And so I guess it depends, I guess the, my point is the one-time pot of money is there. If the board would like to reallocate and dedicate one of those for that, could certainly get a full list to the board with some amounts if, if there's a motion on that. But I would say for right now, probably the easiest is just take it from the capital reserve.
Yes, sir, thank you.
One thing I would ask you all to remember is we've only had two fundraisers for this project, and we raised thirty-eight thousand dollars. So once we get this zoning, and you know, right now, we are getting emails from people saying, what did you do with our money? Where's our money? We aren't seeing anything happening. But we've also had companies here in Rocky Mount that has offered to donate us money, and we've said no. We can't accept any more money until we get this board to let us rezone this property. Once we get this property rezoned, then I feel as certain that we will be able to come back in September and say, hey, we have bought this number down. Now, the shelter we're talking about, and we were gonna go a fif, uh, I think it's fifteen by thirty. That's gonna have a nice concrete, fifteen by thirty foundation. It will have a nice roof with tongue and groove underneath. It will be built by Dillon Docks.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, need to have approval?
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bird? Bird, I'm here as part of the recreation committee. Chairman, the problem we're having with now as far as generating more money, this could be a big win for the, for the board, it could be a big win for the county. We have amazing community support for this facility. Everybody wants this facility, they wanna give us money, they wanna help us do it. I'm an attorney, and I have to advise our committee that until we get some approvals from you all, I can't in good conscience take any more money from these people because I have to make sure it goes where it needs to go. But we have a company right now that wants to hand us a check for ten thousand dollars, sight unseen, to help put into this park because so many people in this community wanna do it. And if you do it here, we may be replicated possibly other locations throughout the county and make it a win not only here, but other places too. So this is a situation where we wanna help out, we know we are very confident we can buy down this number for you and leverage these dollars. But I can't let our committee do that until we get some help from you all. We're not gonna have any true issue with the zoning the way I see it. The PCD has, gonna have to be modified by a rezon, but there's already the dumpster facility there, which was not part of the original PCD situation. So you kinda have a special use there. This was really designed to be a technology corridor, there's a Bojangles there, love Bojangles, but that's not technology. Okay, so we've also already, we've already made some modifications to the PCD in that regard. We shouldn't have any issues as far as, you know, some kind of a wild, unusual, you know, non-conforming use under the PCD. So you should have no problem there getting the zoning the way you need it to do. So this is a situation where I saw, I've just sat back here and listened to the struggles that they're putting you guys under and try to find dollars to make this board not be bad guys. You've got a chance here where you're gonna have a community that's gonna say, look at the great thing these people did, and, and we're gonna let you guys really do everything we can to help you because we can get you to that number. We have people who want us to get you to that number, but I can't get you to that number right now until you guys help me step forward and get that zoning moving forward, so we can then send something out to our people and say, hey, the county's done it, they've helped us out, they've let the zoning go forward, so now let's keep moving. And that's really why we're here, and that's why it's such a huge endeavor, dear project to Reba, she wants to help these people out, and, and as she always does. And so that's really why we're asking for this, because we know that once you do this and help us with that, we can really help you guys in getting the money.
I have no, I have no doubt of that, I have no doubt of Ms. Dillon's ability, because I've seen it so many times. I've seen it so many, if we had a busload of Rebus, we wouldn't never have a problem. But the, this board here, in case it, it, something does happen, and this is just, all it is is a precaution. We just need to know where we may end up being. But yes, I think you understand what, why I asked that.
Oh, absolutely, I think you have to do that, I think you have to be cautious.
We have to be.
Do the right thing, I'm just telling you guys that if you have a kind of a leap of faith for us, we're gonna, we're gonna satisfy that leap of faith, we're gonna make it happen. Because we have so much community support, but I totally understand and appreciate that what the board has to do to make sure the dollars go to the workplace. And so that's a completely understandable concern.
Okay, Board, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Consensus. We need a consensus, is that what you're looking for?
I, I think we need a vote, don't we?
If I may, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just to ask Ms. Ross her again, I think the action today is not necessarily for the board to allocate any dollars at this point, it is to file the application for the zoning modification, upon which, if I hear correctly, in September, staff, community will come back with a, a number at that point. So I think the, that request before the board then is.
I wasn't asking.
Okay.
How much money?
Gotcha, yes, sir.
I was just asking where we may end up being.
Sure, yes, sir.
Before that, but I know what the asking today is, is if we can go to rezoning.
Yeah, does that need a vote or a consensus?
I think, I, I think it needs, let's go ahead and do a, make a motion and vote on it.
I make a motion that we move forward with it.
Second, second.
Got us both in a second, Madam Clerk, do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you all so much.
It will go forward to see if we can get a rezon.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Before they depart. Reba, I've had the pleasure with, with Randy of sitting in on some of your meetings. And I know one of the things that you all have raised is when can you put a sign up? I know that there will be a sign up to announce public hearing for rezoning, but what you all have communicated to me, if I have correct, is that you all feel that your fundraising efforts could be maybe exponentially increased if you saw something saying, you know, potential future home of whatever, you know, the dog park. So I've had, you know, I've struggled, I mean, I agree with you. I just don't know when staff would advise would be the appropriate time to do that if the board's not in a position to approve, you know, what's gonna come to us in September in terms of funding. So I, I think we do need to get that.
I think we're at the point right now that we gotta get it rezoned. And once that happens, then you start putting your signs up.
I'm just wondering if we can have a sign that says, when it says rezoning, we could say, for the potential future of a dog park. That way people would know that that's what we're gonna be stepping forward and taking more money for. And we're gonna work really hard to raise every dollar.
Have we ever done anything like that before?
Um, I guess.
I don't recall.
I, I don't recall, Mr. Chairman, per se, but, but whenever there is a rezoning application, potentially, I guess.
Most people know what it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's on the application.
Typically, you know, you, you try to put out there, you know, when the public hearing will be for the rezon, potentially what the request may be in that regard, more so on the rezoning requests and less so on fundraising. If, if that clarifies it.
I mean, I mean, what the request is for is gonna be on that application?
So it will, on the application, it will be posted, it'll say rezoning for a dog park, and that's really what we need.
Yes, ma'am, potential dog park.
Potential dog park, that's what we need.
Okay.
Because once we can put that out there, or you all put that out there, then we'll go ahead and accept the money that's been pledged.
Okay.
So that when we come back in September, I will be able to tell you how much money we actually have.
Boom, this vote has helped us significantly, and we really appreciate it, because we'll be able to go back to our people now and say the board has graciously let us, let us step and kind of step forward on this project, and the people, I think, are gonna respond. So we really appreciate you doing that, and I, and I think that will really help. And we'll hopefully be able to come back here in September and give you all some really good news about what we've been able to do to help the board make this work.
See, the one thing on this project is we've itemized everything we need. But we've had several companies that have said, we're gonna donate that, like the water fountains and trashcans, companies that have sell things for dogs, we're gonna donate that. But yet we had it on this budget because you need to know what it's gonna cost. But we've already got our numbers way down.
We saw that, it was pretty good.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Let's take.
I was gonna say, and just to finish that real quick, I will thank the amount of time and effort that's gone into this project from Ms. Dillon, her board, Ms. Smith, and Paul and his staff as well. Sometimes it's the little projects that eat you up the most, and there's definitely been many hours put into this one to try and make it happen. So kudos to everybody, and great job.
All right, let's take, let's take about a twenty-minute break, we'll come back at six o'clock.
They have one more item.
We got one more.
Oh, go ahead.
We'll, we'll try and do this very quickly. The next project we're gonna do a quick update on is a new request that the county has had for an equestrian arena at the recreation park. County staff consisting of myself, Paul Chapman, and Kevin Tosh have met with the stakeholder group, including Ms. Dillon again, Dale Simmons, and Tommy Cundiff to discuss the details of the project and what they were proposing. So I'm gonna hand this over to Ms. Dillon, she can run through the details of this, and then Paul's gonna jump in and help with a little bit of the maintenance and budget as well.
Okay, I have been with the fair from day one, from the time we first, Ronnie Thompson and I first decided we need the fair. And over the years, the fair has been wonderful, but when they operated on me, they took that part of my voice box, so it sounds funny, and I don't like to hear my voice.
We gotta hear it, though.
But I think y'all can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
But anyway, the fair has got to the point, and I've had people say to me, well, the reason I don't come to the fair now is there's nothing, I've already seen everything, and unless you've got small children that wants to pet the animals or wants to ride the rides, a lot of the people have stopped coming. So I was sitting there one day, and this bright idea went in my head that we needed to have something. So I checked with some of the other fairs, checked with Tazewell County and Russell County. Those are two very small counties. I asked them what their, why their fairs are successful, and they told me that it's because they're, they're horse shows, that most of their funding is picked up from the horse shows. So I approached Paul, and I told him I thought we needed to, to build, and I have a hard time saying equestrian, so I'm gonna call it a horse trail. So I told Paul, I thought we needed one. So we went before the rec board, and we discussed it, and they all approved it. So we decided, okay, it's time to bring it to you all and say, you know, we need to build a horse trail to have horse shows. Now, these people that come in here with these nice, big, huge horses, they don't come in here poor pulling cheap-looking trailers. They come in here with money, with these big, beautiful horses that cost thousands of dollars, and they have a good following. Dale, come here. I have an expert person that he puts on horse shows at his home, which he lives right above me. He does horse shows at his home, he's done it for years, he's very familiar with all the circuit of horse shows. Now, this horse, remember one thing, we're not building this horse ring just for the fair. It would be used for the fair, but here's the thing about it. We can lease this out to other venues to raise money that would have big horse shows, that would bring people here all throughout the fall and the summer and the spring. So we're not looking at just bringing money for one district, but we're looking at bringing money to all the districts. By letting other people use this, we can have very good bylaws. We can say, if you rent it, you have to have an insurance policy to protect us if there's any damage. You leave it the way it's rented, you'll pay a deposit, if you leave it in good shape, you get your money back. Otherwise, they pay Parks and Rec to fix it, or their insurance company will fix it. So if you have questions about building it, this is a gentleman that can tell you everything about building one and the kind of people he has that comes to his, the kind of shows they have. This up here is similar to what I would like to see us have. And if you go down, we're gonna put it, we're gonna put it down at Delora into the park, we're pretty close to the tractor pools. The thing I want you all to remember is, if this would do exceptionally well, like I hope it will for this county, then later down the road, we have the Smith farm that we could build a huge one on. But this right now would be something we could use for the fair and for to be leased out. And I'm not saying lease out for, say, two or three hundred dollars. These fairgrounds told me they lease Thursday out for twenty-five hundred to three thousand for a Friday and Saturday night. So this can make money for this county. So here's the thing about it. I'm asking you all to think hard about letting us go forward with this project. And I know I come to you all the time throwing stuff at you guys, but you all have the, you all have the authority to remove me from the rec board any day of the week. And I've been with y'all for eighteen, this is my nineteenth year, but I'm at large. But as long as you have me here, I'm gonna come to you, and I'm gonna bring you projects. Is there any questions for Dale?
Board got any questions? Dale, why are you here? We need to talk a minute. Dale has a, what did I do with my glasses? Dale, Dale has at his arena, D and D Arena, it's on Brooksmill Road. The date is July the eleventh.
Eleven and twelve.
And the twelfth, July eleventh and twelfth. He's got a wagon, a buggy coming that will haul all of us, and if you don't want to ride in the buggy, he'll get a horse for you to ride.
Oh, good lord.
So.
I'm offering you to ride in the grand entry before the rodeo starts, if you'd like. I'm offering you to ride in the grand entry before the rodeo starts, if you'd like, and I wanted to do that before any of this come up. So just, you know, and also I've offered Sheriff Overton, and he's left now, but I told him I had a white horse for him to ride.
Tell him what else?
But anyway.
You told me about the black horse, did you tell him?
Yeah, well, I didn't know if I should tell that.
I'll tell him.
No, but Reba asked me about this, uh, doing some grading on this, and I told her that I would donate my, my uh equipment and fuel to this project, just enough to pay for my, my fuel, I mean, and my labor for my guys running it to help out with it. I remember years ago, when my kids were small, they participated in the Sontag Horse Show, which kinda went away. And then there's, there's a few here and there. We have a, I remember the four eight shows, now they don't have him seemingly anymore. I let the Franklin County have their ag show at the place for three or four years, and Cynthia told me that that wasn't gonna happen this year, so that was a lot of shows. The, the animals for the cows and the rabbits and the chickens and the goats and the kids for their projects was a good thing. That could uh have a spot for that there. Uh, I had talked to, she's asking me about for the fair, and I talked to the uh Little Rodeo Association, Virginia High School Rodeo, about maybe coming and doing a little performance uh one or two of the nights, and they're getting back with me, the board met about a week ago. And uh they do the uh go tying and uh calf roping, team roping, uh poles, poles, barrels, uh breakaway. They don't have any bull riders this year, all the senior boys graduated, but I host them there at the house twice a year. They have eighty or ninety kids that participate from the little fellows through the high school ages, and that's a real, I feel, a real good, uh, real good association. They do a good job with those kids, and uh that could be something that would be fun for the fair if they have some dates available. I know they do one up in Dublin, and they do one down in uh, uh, oh, down towards Richmond, the county down there. So he was gonna check and see if they had dates that. I also know some associations that could do rodeos there, but they're very more expensive to bring in the guys that bug the bulls and buck the horses and do the whole blown deal. But I do think it would help pick up the fair itself as a show and be an asset down the road. There are some startup costs to it, of course, like everything, but I think you could start in on the ground and build to it each year as the fundings came in for it, and it would be a success.
Say county, you trying to think of Amelia?
I'm sorry?
Amelia County?
Yes, Amelia, that's right.
Mm-hmm. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Chapman.
Huh?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Chapman if um.
Paul?
Yeah, he's got a turn coming. Go ahead.
Did you wanna go over, did you wanna go over this?
All right. I'm wanting to go over the budget. For the sediment control, uh, we've got five thousand. Now, we pretty much have the pond and everything down there, and tractor pool and everything down there, so we're not gonna be disturbing a whole lot of land, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem. And I think Paul's already covered some of that, and he will cover that with you all. The stabilization, we're looking at ten thousand. The sand quarry, eight thousand. Uh, the arena, the panels, fifteen thousand. So we have a total of forty thousand dollars. Now, here's the kicker on this. If you all decide that you want to build this, my organization has agreed that we will have a fundraiser to try to buy down this number again for you all. Uh, so you're look, you're looking at forty thousand for you all to cover, but what we raise, and we're hoping to be able to raise twenty thousand, we would give it back to the county. Or you all could say we could use it for something else that I'm gonna do.
Reeve, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna turn it over to Paul now, and he's gonna.
Excuse me, Reeve?
Cover his part.
Reeve.
Reeve, Mr. Jameson has a question.
What size are we talking about as far as the pounds, uh, what size area?
One fifty, it's one fifty by two forty.
Yeah.
And it's big enough for barrel racing, say, something like that?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's standard size arena.
Okay.
For an outdoor, I mean, you can make it bigger, but you really don't, don't, that's a good, that's a good all around size for them. The panels that we priced, is a guy used, he's actually out of Kentucky, but they're the two inch galvanized panels. They've, I've had some of them now for twenty plus years, and you take care of them air last. They're heavy, they're the, the six foot ones where no bull or nothing could jump out of them. They are portable, you can move them. If you were to move them to another area, arena or something, unclip them and carry them along.
The size again.
I'm sorry?
The size again.
Hundred and fifty wide, two fifty long.
Uh, I have contacted Blacksburg College and some of the other schools, and they have uh made me aware of the fact that any bleachers that they, if they close the school, the bleachers, they were getting in touch with me, so I'm hoping to be able to find used bleachers. If, for right now, we would bring in our portable bleachers that we have already.
And the way the hillside lays, when we graded out, it'd be a, a nice grade bank there, on grass that you can sit on and still see. It lends itself real good for, for viewing, for, for spectator view. And the thoughts was they could pull off on the side of their existing road, park the trailers and things there for now in the grass. Course, if it was pouring down rain or something, you wouldn't have it anyway. So, you know, that's, that's an option there on that. We would need is he'll show you to bring a little road around off of an existing road about unloading livestock or any of that, if you had any of the events. I reached out to a couple of the barrel associations, if we can get the rodeo deal uh done for, maybe for the fair, to have some barrel racers come a night or two or something, and so far I haven't got any commitment to that because I've been kinda holding off to see if the high schoolers can do it, 'cause I think the, I think the community would like to see a variety of things to, like our events is team roping at home there, and if you don't have somebody do it, you watch it go a half a dozen times, and it's like watching paint dry. But when you have different events, it kinda holds your interest, you know, so.
Do you, do you have any contacts for mutton busting?
Well, they do in the high school deal, but uh, you know, uh.
That'd be a good draw for them.
That's right. That would be, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think this is something that for the fair, we would incorporate a lot of school kids. Now, for the vents, the people renting it for fundraisers, they, they probably wouldn't be used to school kids, but for the fair, we would probably use a lot of school kids.
I remember the Sontag Horse Shows way back in the day, that was a big deal. And most everybody here now goes down to Pat, the Patrick Henry Saddle Club down on Fifty Seven at uh the other side of Bassett. And I, I'm all for this. I've said we, we need a place like this for farm kids and everybody else to, um, maybe they're not into playing soccer or baseball, or maybe they're out in the field working all during the spring and don't get to go to all that stuff. Uh, this would be a great opportunity, but I will go back to what I said earlier and what we're gonna talk about Thursday, that we have to have a priority on, on how much time is gonna get devoted to things and where our priorities lie. So this would be a good, I'm all for it, I wanna see it, it'd be a great asset for the fair and just for the county altogether, but we need to align our priorities.
Anyone else?
I think I can, I think Ms. Smith asked me about a few items here, and I kinda anticipate, I know most of you all and kinda get in your heads and can anticipate some of the questions you might have. And I knew that uh Ms. Dillon's uh passion, and as you know, Mr. Simmons is very knowledgeable, and so I knew this is a, a, a project that would uh come to you, but I wanted to do some due diligence to um just do a little homework before he brought to you all. So took it to the planning department, and um they reviewed these initial plans, and the only thing they would need for the size of a project would be they would need an erosion sediment control plan. Um, that's, that's all that would be needed, and um you saw in our estimates there earlier. Um, we talked to an engineer, and he could, he would put together an E and S plan for about five thousand dollars. Talked to Charles Brubaker, of course, with the Antique Farm Days, and about this project, just to make sure it wouldn't compete. Um, and he said, no, this, this project would actually complement what they're doing down there. He didn't see any issues at all. Of course, talked to um tourism with the fair, talked to Kevin Tosh, and he was all supportive of this and was excited that, about the addition that this would have to the fair. His probably only concern was that he doesn't have those contacts right now to provide an equestrian event, but it sounds like Mr. Simmons and other people that's out there, we just don't have those quite yet. Um, as far as like maintenance and upkeep and those kind of things, those are always big on my mind. Um, this is like, to be honest, this would be something totally new to us. We, we're used to keeping like ball fields and trails and beaches that, like that sort of thing maintained, but arenas is kinda new. But from what I gather, from Mr. Simmons and other folks, it looks like it's, it's totally within our wheelhouse. I think we can maintain it. We have some uh equipment and field drag for a baseball field, I think it'll work. We have enough PTO tiller for a tractor, I think that'll work. And so essentially, just be a little um resurfacing it once a year, it sounds like, which won't be, wouldn't be expensive, just some general spraying to keep the weeds out. I think that's, I've talked to our maintenance team, and they didn't seem to have any issue with maintaining it. So I don't think ongoing maintenance will be an issue for us. Um, I guess the, the next steps would be, um, we've already had, you know, stakeholder meeting, we've already presented to the Recreation Advisor Commission, and they've already um approved it unanimously, they were all excited about it. And so this next step would be present to you all to proceed with, you know, planning and the permitting aspect of it. We can get an engineer, he's ready to go, I assume they give him the green light, so if you all approve, we could proceed with that. That's a possible step forward.
Paul, does the county have uh any kind of a blanket insurance form of permit that covers these kind of things?
Yeah.
Or do you have to, or is it, uh, does it cover all the events at Parks and Rec?
That's right, yeah, we have a, a blanket, I'm correct with my wrong, Mr. Carter, yes, that's correct. Yeah, we would only be, if there was like gross negligence or um some issue like that, we, is um, where there would be an issue, but yes.
Okay, so we are covered in with our insurance.
That's correct.
Any more questions?
No questions.
Anybody? Laura, you go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, you know me. Um, I appreciate the due diligence with respect to uh talking to planning, and an E and S plan um has been indicated. Um, and I, I'm guessing that that, that's gonna look at the total amount of land disturbance with respect to stormwater.
Correct.
Um, but, so we don't know at this point if stormwater detention pond's gonna be required.
Uh, I talked to Mr. Rainey, and I, we showed him the dimensions and kinda where it laid out, and we knew there'll be some more land disturbance in just the arena, and he felt like the land disturbed for doing the bench cutting and grading should be within the size so that a, a stormwater permit would not be.
And the other question I have, um, because I don't know what's being planned for ingress and egress as it relates to if the fair's not going on, and it's gonna be special events like, like Ms. Dillon's talking about. Um, if there are, I mean, my understanding is with planning and permitting that VDOT's gonna have to be involved with looking at site distance, with looking at um size of ingress and egress and those types of things, that, I mean, I would think this permit and um staff can tell me otherwise, Mr. Sandy, um, it's gonna have to undergo the due diligence like any other project, Mr. Sandy?
Well, I assume you're using the existing main entrance to the park.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so I think there may be a, there may be a look by VDOT, but I think probably the existing entrance that they're utilizing.
That would be helpful.
I don't think they're proposing a new entrance on the state road.
That, that would be very helpful. I just didn't know, especially when it comes to the horse trailers and things like that, you know, when other things are going on at the fair, you know, make sure we're looking at all that to make sure that it's, you know, that it's gonna be path of least resistance, if you will.
Yeah, Ms. Smith, um, you might remember um an arena that was um discussed a number of years ago, and that was one of the problems, that it was being proposed on the opposite side of Sontag, and that they were having an issue getting a commercial entrance permit, and that's really what the, it just got tangled up with that, but this would be using the existing permit. I'd be glad to touch base with VDOT to make sure that, you know, horse trailers wouldn't um somehow affect, you know.
So is there gonna be a formal application to the county where the due diligence gets triggered, or how's this gonna work?
For the, uh, for a VDOT, or?
For, for just the event.
The whole project.
A special, I mean, I, an event application, I don't know how that's gonna, this is kinda new, like you said earlier.
Yeah.
Um, you know, this is more than just the ag fair, it's a special events venue, if you will, that's gonna work during the ag fair as well. So I would have to yield to staff to understand what type of permitting process that we would have to go through to make sure we're being proper and legal with how we approach this.
Yeah, I think, you know, unless they're building a, a structure, um, I think what, what Paul has looked at with the staff is that they would need to have an approved erosion and sediment control plan. And the stormwater, as, as Paul alluded to, the, the threshold there is one acre, so.
It is, yeah.
As long as they don't exceed a disturbance of one acre, they probably will not fall within the stormwater requirements, but they still have to do an engineered erosion sediment control plan. And so I think probably the first step is the board saying, yes, we allow this use to happen and move forward on this property since the county is the property owner. And then, you know, kinda moving to the next phase would be applying for those permits, preparing the plan, and moving in that direction if, if the board wants to move forward with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
One of the things we're working on for sure is to um just updating our policies and procedures. We'll probably make something like if this arena's being used, that you can't use a large shelter just because those two might conflict. We'll do some like internal policies and procedures, um, you know, on how this is operated to make sure.
What about staff capacity? Maintenance on an annual basis?
As far as like ongoing maintenance, I think we'll, uh, I think we'll be good as far as like mowing around it and grooming the, the um, uh, the, the surface itself. You know, if we were renting this thing out all the time, that would be a, you know, if it's rented out a few times a year, I think we're, I think we can um maintain that. I, I've just talked, this is our maintenance team, and I think we can um do that. If it was, you know, used every weekend, that would be a different story, that would be a whole lot of, you know, it'd probably be way too much use. We'll probably have to put some kind of like, you know, limits on how much it can be used.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Quinn?
So Paul, on the last slide, it's very clear that you're looking for approval to proceed with planning and permitting, and then on an earlier slide, the first step was gonna cost ten thousand dollars. So putting those two together, are you looking for us to approve an appropriation of ten thousand dollars so you can proceed with planning and permitting tonight?
That'd be great, yes, yeah. It was.
The five thousand, it's Parks and Rec it's gonna cover for the engineer.
Yeah.
Oh, five?
So it was, um, right now, the, an E and S plan would be about, would, would be about five thousand dollars. The, the um costs for actually excavating it, Mr. Simmons, um, has given us an estimate of about ten thousand dollars to actually construct it, so it'd just be that for that five thousand dollars.
Five, five thousand tonight, okay.
So the ten thousand is in kind?
Uh, that would be for, um, I might see Mr. Simmons will, um, I believe that is the cost for him to, for his fuel and, and that sort of thing. That's, I think a deeply discounted rate.
That's for him to develop it, for all of his work. He's donating all the equipment. Uh, he will have some workers operating the equipment and his fuel. That's only, that's what he's, his.
Now, with the steel fence around the side, E and S, we're gonna have to hydroseed the banks, seed backs, spread topsoil, blow straw, that was kinda covered in that expense. I got Jay Perleman at Jack's Mountain to quote the, cut us a pretty good deal on the quarry sand, and the delivery of it is in that eight thousand there. The arena panels, that was about the best a guy would do on those for us. Uh, he did offer, he would lease them for two years to us for, but we didn't choose to go that route, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
But, but tonight you're looking for five thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so not the total cost of the project, because on the last slide, you mentioned that you were gonna come back with the, the um final project cost. I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to be clear on what you're asking of us.
That was the initial, uh, there's, it could be, it's up to you all, I suppose. You all could um propose, um, give the full amount to, for us to proceed, or I guess to ask tonight was just for, uh, to proceed with permitting, to, just similar like the dog park, just uh.
Get me some carryover from where the fair is.
And you come back.
Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Burke.
You had a question about insurance. One thing you might all want to consider as well is if you designate this as a park under Virginia Code fifteen point two dash eighteen point zero nine, if it's designated as a park, the county has sovereign immunity except for gross negligence upon action. Much, much higher standard. Much, much higher standard, much more difficult to reach. So if you designate the area as a park as well because it's a fair, you should be able to do that. The fact, even if you require to have to pay money to get in, that is not abrogated as being called a park. So because of that, 15.2-18.09 will protect you and elevate the standard to gross negligence. So you really shouldn't have a whole lot of issues with requiring insurance. Still probably wanna do waivers, still probably wanna do all the necessary paperwork to cover yourself, but you have a really big protection.
Thank you.
I would also like for Kevin to tell you.
Ken?
So, kind of in our preliminary discussion, just so that the board is aware of whatever your decision is this evening, that currently there's $24,787.63 left in the fair line item from this year that could be used for any portion of this. All, everything has been paid for, for the fair, and there's still that much remaining in that account.
$24,000, give or take.
Give or take.
Is that carryover from the last fair?
No, that, yes. So we're, we're the unique situation where the fiscal year starts July 1st, the fair happens in August. Typically, all the bills are paid for by September, October. So we're confident there's no more expenses coming out of that.
It's just carryover.
It's just what, what's left that will go into that carryover.
Not gonna hit the general fund, Ron Carter? Yes, it is. We'll hit
It would. It's not spent.
Yeah.
So what we need from you all right now is a yes vote that we can proceed with looking and getting the drawings, the engineer drawings, and bring them back to you all. And so that's what your pleasure.
The, we don't have to do anything for zoning or anything like that since it's already designated as a park.
There's no zoning.
There is, there isn't any out that way, though, is there?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I think
No, you can do whatever you want to do.
I think the main thing is, I think what's being, if the, if there's consensus with the board to explore this further, will be to explore the cost of the project, an ENS plan, if you will, as Ms. Dillon and Mr. Chapman pointed out. And then Ms. Brandy has investigated this sum with county staff. Ms. Brandy, I'm sorry, Ms. Rosser, sorry, Brandy.
That's fine.
And can, may shed a little bit more light. But I think as the initial step, again, it's looking more at the ENS. And to Mr. Carter's point, it's just a matter of, of where to take those funds from.
And, and I'll add, the ask today is strictly the $5,000 for that engineered plan so that we can ensure that it's not disturbing more than an acre. We don't wanna tell you guys it's $40,000. You approve that right now, we come back and say, well, now we need a stormwater pond, and it's $100,000. So at this point, we really just need to do our due diligence on the plan, make sure that we're, we're good to go on erosion and sediment control, and then bring it back to you in a similar respect as we did the Dog Park with the final design and budget.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion
Okay.
that we award them the $5,000 that comes from the $24,000 from, leftover from last year's fair, to come back to us with the ENS plan and better figures.
Second? You got a second? My clerk, do a roll call on that.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right. Y'all come back and let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Reba.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all for your work on that. All right, we're gonna take a real short break and then come back.
Is that dinner?
About a 10-minute break. We're not gonna have time. We'll eat after a while.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna take about a 10-minute break. Pause for the calls, and then we'll come back. We'll go into, we got a couple of public hearings this afternoon. And first one's gonna be on the secondary six-year plan. Ms. Cooper?
VDOT is gonna be doing your public hearing this evening. In fact, Robin is gonna help us with that. And if I'm here, if y'all have any additional questions.
Okay. Well, they're working you good today, aren't they?
Getting my workout in today, aren't I?
You are.
So I'm gonna go over the allocations that we got. This year was approximately $347,000 shy of that. We do not anticipate that allocation changing very much over the next few years. So through 2031, that we expect that to remain about the same. We have seven projects currently on the secondary six-year plan, and these are in order.
Seven?
Seven. Yes, sir.
Can you talk to that?
I'm sorry. Is that better?
That's good.
Okay. So the first one, of course, is Red Valley. And we have determined that we're gonna do approximately six tenths of a mile on each end of that route for a total of 1.2 miles. The second one is Nuvella, and it's a little over two tenths of a mile. And then we have a section of Webster Road, Route 744, about three quarters of a mile. And then we have a section of Timberline Road, a little over a mile that's gonna be done. And I can give you the milepost if you want those spelled out for you. And then 795 Stade Mill Road, there's still a small section there that hasn't been paved, and that's the next one in line. We have Route 881 Narrows Road, about three tenths of a mile. And then the last one is Clark Road. That one goes from 755 to 619. And I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any questions about those routes or moving forward.
Anyone got any questions or comments?
Just a quick question, if I may. Robin, on the executive summary, it talks about potential for several roads that may have to be removed from the secondary plan.
That was before we made the adjustment to Red Valley.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify this. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'll speak to that if you, if, if you want. So initially, we were faced with the issue of having to, to drop a few roads off the list. And so, you know, we had talked with Supervisor Thompson as well about Red Valley, and so worked with VDOT. And we came up with a, a plan to get both ends of it paved and kind of leave the middle unpaved, and be able to do that with the funding that was allowed and keep that project on, on track. And so I think, great job with, with the VDOT folks to kind of keep all the projects on the list and, and really get Red Valley done. And was it Nuvella, right?
Nuvella, yes.
Nuvella. Actually, it would be done maybe this year or early next year.
We plan to start them, it's this fall, by this fall at the most. And the Nuvella, I mean, the Red Valley part that we're not doing is the section that doesn't seem to have very many homes. So the, the most populated areas are the ones we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna open it up now to the public hearing. Madam Clerk, you got anybody to speak to this?
Rainne Picor.
Come forward, please. What was that name?
Rainne Picor.
Mr. Picor. Rainne Picor?
John Meredith.
Good evening. Chairman Thompson, I want to thank you for the opportunity to
Take your full name and address, please.
John Meredith, 408 Mountaineer Road, Boons Mill, Virginia.
Speaking to the mic, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. As a rookie. Again, Chairman Thompson, I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear and address you this evening, and with your permission to address the entire board.
Yes, sir.
Supervisors, thank you for affording me the time to speak on behalf of your constituents and the residents of Mountaineer Road in, in Boons Mill. My name is John Meredith, and I come before you this evening to rectify an injustice which has caused our community to suffer needlessly for nearly 25 years. Each of you has gotten an information packet, I believe, of last month, and been renewed this evening, just in case that might gone amiss with history. Behind the hope of paving our seven tenths of a mile long road, it describes how in the early 2000s, Mountaineer Road had been, been approved and was in the process of being surveyed for paving when an impediment in the form of unused absentee owner garage would need to be removed. And in your packets for these pictures, and I don't know how to use this, but is there a way to put this up?
Go ahead, sir. You're gonna run out of time. Go ahead and talk over. You'll come up in a minute.
All right. The road that you'll, or the, the garage that you see, VDOT contacted the owners. They declined to allow that, that structure to be removed. At that point, any intentions of paving the road by VDOT were abandoned, not suspended or delayed or moved to the next six-year plan, just dropped. No discussion was held with residents to determine a workaround, no threat of imminent demand, just off to the dustbump bin of history. This has left a festering sore in the hearts of the people of Mountaineer for all the public bodies involved in what became and remains a fiasco. As I went door to door with the current petition for paving Mountaineer and Doris by our town council and by the mayor, my neighbors were eager to sign but sardonically laughed at my naivete in expecting anything to come from it. So far, they've been right. We've had a thorough and polite explanation of all the counts of why we kind of expeditiously accommodated in our efforts to correct this injustice. We've heard endlessly about the six-year plans and positive secondary road budgets, not to mention playing whack-a-mole with VDOT and the county about how to even get on the six-year list. Every one of us has at some point hopefully experienced a wrong made right. It happens in our personal life and business and politics and many other ways. When it occurs, it satisfies the soul, it restores faith and trust, but requires honesty, integrity, thoughtfulness, motivation, and action. You as supervisors have the power and means to provide all of that. We are asking that you intervene in this 20-year-plus calamity and adopt a resolution to place Mountaineer Road on the 26-27 paving plan, fully funded and number one on that list, and end this injustice. My question is, are you willing?
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, you got anyone else?
That's all I have.
Is there anyone else here wish to speak to the six-year plan? Yes, sir.
You talking to me?
Sir?
I'm done. I just asked a question. Are you willing?
We don't answer questions in
Yep.
Does anyone else here wish to speak to the VDOT six-year plan? All right, seeing no more response. We'll go back into closed session. We need to make a, you need to go for, we need a resolution on this tonight.
Yes, sir. Need a motion.
All right, we need a, need a motion, number seven.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adopt a resolution for the secondary, make sure I get this right, the, the secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2026 through 2031.
Second? Second. Madam Clerk, you do a roll call of that, please.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. This leaves, case you were a special use permit.
Just bear with me for a second here. Thank you, Chairman Thompson, members of the board. We're here to do a special use permit, permit for a, to construct and operate a solar-generated facility that'll have five megawatts. Your future land use is agricultural forestry, rural residential. And I'm gonna get into some background. The project buildable area is about 38 acres. Approximately 25 of these acres will have the panels on them. During the operation of the Edwards Solar Project is what it's being called, there will be approximately 84 acres left of open space for forest land and other vegetation of unused land by the project. A portion of this property will be used for setbacks and buffers, while the remainder will be retained to be used by the landowner. The project will deliver clean and cost competitive energy through a distribution circuit and crosses Jack's Creek Road next to the project site and connects to the Appalachian Power Company Pinhook Station. The project is approximately 109 acres of land. Like I said before, 15 acres will be used for pasture and hay production, the remaining 89 acres for forest. It is my understanding that the property had been used for, that was logged or timbered in 2011. It has grown back. Basically, it is my, also my understanding that the property owners will not ever be using this to do farmland again. The proposed PV panels produce clean and affordable energy that flows into the local grid, powering homes and businesses. There will be no batteries for this project. The project proposes a fence along the perimeter of the project area, the 36.5 acres. And that is shown on the conceptual plan that we'll look at in a few minutes. The applicant stated during the operation and maintenance, the facility would produce no vibration, emissions, odors, or fumes during the construction. There will be limited noise and equipment emissions, which will mitigate and required by our ordinance, including limiting hours of operation and post-driving and other construction equipment from sunrise to sunset. The project does use, does not use any public utility, so there will not be an impact on that. The setback for the project area will be a minimum of 150 feet from public rightaways and 300 feet from any residence. As you remember, this is in our zoning ordinance. The project will utilize the dense existing vegetation screening. If the trees are removed during construction process, they will be replanted. If you've been out to the site, you will see how wooded this site is, and it'll show that in the conceptual plan. This property consists, well, there's three residential parcels adjoining this property to the northeast. There's one, and it's owned by the landowner. To, the parcels to the east and the west are owned by landowners participating in this project and their relatives. We expect a lot of the vacant pot part to be used by the family owner, like we said, for sulfur culture or pasture land. You also know, if you're familiar with this area, there is an active quarry at the end of this, the street, which is the Rockydale Corporation. The applicant supplied several maps, and they are in your packet of information, being the prime farmland, showing 9.2 acres of prime farmland, and 25 acres of farmland of statewide importance, for a total of 34.2 acres of this 109-acre tract, which is approximately .013% of the land under this designation. The county did do, as we usually do with solar projects, we did hire a third party to review the application for its complete, completeness and compliance with the Franklin County ordinance. If you remember in the past, they look at our, and it, actually, it's in your packet from the consultant. They'll look at each section of our zoning ordinance, and they'll put an, an explanation if it was complete or not complete. an explanation if it was complete or not complete. I am happy to say that there was no deficiencies, so the application moves forward. They did offer us some conditions, which we did take a lot of their suggestions, along with the solar company staff suggestions also for conditions that we'll get into in a few minutes. Also, as you remember, the third party did look at it for completeness with our comprehensive plan, the 15.32, the 15.22232 review. If you remember, the planning commission did say it was in compliance with our comp plan, and you had heard, you adhered not to have the public hearing for the comp plan at your work session last month. Staff has, before the planning commission meeting, staff did receive one phone call about the project and two letters of support before the planning commission. After the planning commission, before your public hearing, we have received two letters of support. They should be at your dais for you to be able to read. I think one is from a Clifton Wade and the other one from a Ben Wilson. We'd like to give you a vicinity map of the location. It is in the Union Hall Election District. We also like to give you an aerial of the property of where the solar project will take place. We also give you the zoning map. As you can see, the area is zoned A1 agricultural and is surrounded by A1. We also like to give you the future land use map. It is agricultural, rural, residential, forestry. And then this is the conceptual plan that was supplied by the company, and you will see the vegetation around it. And from the aerial, you can see the existing vegetation, the, where Mountain Valley Pipeline goes through. These obviously are your solar panels. And if you have any questions of that, the conceptual plan, I'd be glad to answer. The analysis, the proposed solar facility shall have minimized impacts to the land use and surrounding properties or the environmental aspects. And you had a lot of information in your packet about environmental and different aspects that we looked through in the zoning ordinance. The project is designed to minimize environmental impacts through existing wooded and buffered screening areas. Screening will provide mitigation to the visual impacts to the public and right-ofways, adjacent property, the natural and historic resources, and the project, the scenic view shed of this area. The project will generate renewable energy and revenue for the county. The project is not located in a designated growth area. The project after construction will not generate noise, traffic, or other environmental impacts like other land uses allowed in the A1 zoning district. As we've said before, the county did hire the third party, and in their compliance along with the planning commission, the special use permit at this location, that it would not impose, well, we have reasonable conditions to help protect the current adjacent land uses. The proposed use will not be substantial detriment to the adjacent property. The character of the, the subject of the zoning district may not be changed by the proposed use, and that such use may be in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the zoning ordinance and with this district with the permitted uses by right in the A1 zoning district. The planning commission, as I stated before, did hold their public hearing on May 13th for the compliance with the comprehensive plan, and that vote, I failed to tell you, was seven to oh. The planning commission recommended approval of the special use permit for the five-watt megawatt utility scale generation facility with 35 conditions by a vote of seven to oh. Instead of reading the 35 conditions, you had them in your packet. I would just like to summarize them briefly for you. I'm sure that you all have read them. There are general things that we are requesting for conditions. In fact, there's a lot of them. It's in 1, 2, 3, 4, 11, 17, 18, 20, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27, 28, 30, and 31. Those conditions I consider general to this plan. They're gonna be stuff like substantial compliance to the concept plan, talking about the development area of the plan, talking about vegetation, if there's a change of owner, the fencing, what happens if there's damaged panels with our decommissioning, stuff about inspections, of how the property's gonna be inspected, the panels that will be used. There's also talk about vegetation in 15 and 17 conditions. There's talks about different types of bonds. There will be bonding with site plan review, and those are conditions 7, 17, 32, and 34. Site plan review, ENS and stormwater is a big thing for us and for solar panels. Your conditions 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 14, 19, 21, 29, and 35, do reference that. So we'll be looking in site plan review about utility connections, view sheds, stuff dealing with VDOT, other agencies, the big thing, the grading, stormwater. Also, you'll notice one of the conditions talks about payment and revenue that can be generated. And at the planning commission, the 35th condition talks about soil testing. There was some concerns about soil testing, so the developer decided to put a condition on themselves dealing with that. I would be glad to go over any of those conditions in more detail. If you have questions, I just did not feel like you wanted me to stand here and read 35 conditions, and some of them are really long.
I would like to hear about the decommissioning.
Okay. Well, there, there is a decommissioning plan in your packet, and also the condition, let me find that one. Just give me a second.
Okay.
I know it's in here, I'm sorry. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry. This is part of condition 34. This is one of the decommission, engineered decommission plan and decommissioning cost estimate will be required at final site plan review. So, and when, we will get that during the site plan, and they will have to put up a bond for the decommissioning of the project, and then... In your pocket, and I, I don't know what tab to tell you it's at, Mr. Thompson, but there is a decommissioning plan that was accepted, and it gives you some general information of a cost estimate of what we will see during site plan review. So it talks about what they're, what they would do during decommissioning, and they would have to adhere to what's in our zoning ordinance, and we will make sure of that during site plan review. Do you, how much more detail would you like me to go?
Also, is it transferable if they help and sell the project?
Is it transferable if somebody else? Yes, if they have a certain amount of time, if the project is sold, that they have to notify, well, I think it's just of the property owner. I don't think they plan to sell the project.
You know, it's a lot of things, nobody plans in the beginning, but it happens. Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Anybody else got any questions for? Is the owners here, or anybody here wishing to speak to?
Yes, CEP Solar. Paul is here to speak on their behalf, and he has a small presentation. And I know two of the property owners are here tonight, and I foresee that they will probably want to speak, they did at the planning commission.
Then the, CEP Solar, will he come forward?
I'm trying to get to the end of this thing. You could've probably done it quicker than me. Well, I'll get it here in a second, sorry about that.
Thank you. I'm Don. Paul will speak in just a moment. Just a couple brief introductory comments. Chairman Thompson and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about our Edwards Solar Project. My name is Don Giesek, and I'm the Director of Planning Initiatives at CEP Solar. I'm a Virginia native, and I currently reside in Hanover County. CEP is a Virginia-based small business whose purpose is to partner with landowners, communities, and customers to deliver solar projects that will generate both environmental and economic benefits for our Commonwealth. We take seriously our responsibility to deliver high-quality solar projects, and we're grateful for having had the opportunity to work with Franklin County staff and others, and we look forward to giving you a project, to delivering a project that you would be proud of. I'd like to introduce just a couple members of our team that are here today. One is John Pouvac, attorney with Gentry Lock, and the other is Paul Cousins, our project manager for this project. So my last quick thought, and then I'd like to ask Paul to come up, is we've listened very carefully to community comments and suggestions made by the county planning staff and others at the site visit and the community meeting. We're happy to, we were happy to host staff on the site and appreciate the feedback that is always generated from these site visits. And so I want to thank you for your foresight to require that kind of visit. It feels like it's a good opportunity for people to get to know a site. So thanks again for your time, and Paul Cousins, our project manager, will now step forward to talk to you about the project in more detail.
I mean, I got a question, I don't know if it's for you or for Paul.
Sure.
But I understand from reading this, or what was said a while ago, that there's no batteries involved in this.
That is correct.
Everything, everything that we've been hearing that there are batteries involved, and that's where the energy is stored until it's used. So how, how's this working?
Yeah, that's, so the way, this is a distributed generation project, so there's no batteries on site. Any, any power made would be made during the day. It's just only additional electrons added to the grid. If there is battery storage eventually developed in the county, it could store from that, from that local grid. But no, we're not proposing any battery storage on this project. There are, there's lots of projects operating in that manner in the state right now.
So what you're saying is any energy that's generated, it goes straight into the EPCO grid?
It goes, yes, it goes straight into the, the local distribution circuit grid, and I'll get into that. It doesn't go up to those high-voltage transmission lines. It stays local on that, on that three-phase circuit where it's generating power.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I can get a little bit more detailed about those decommissioning questions. It's, it's not really spelled out in the conditions, it's more just in your, in your, your zoning ordinance, and it is completely transferable, no matter who, who ends up owning the project if it is sold. So yeah, thank you, Don, for your introduction. Thank you, Lisa, for all of your work over the last couple of months, working through this application review process. Thank you, Chairman Thompson and members of the board, and happy birthday, Chairman Thompson.
Yeah, as Don said, my name is Paul Cousins. I'm the project manager for the Edwards Solar Project. I was born and raised right outside of Richmond. I currently live in Hanover County as well, live in Ashland. I went to Emory and Henry College, not too far away from here. Some of my dear friends are from Franklin County. I'm happy to be here working in Franklin County and definitely happy to be working here in the state of Virginia. As Don mentioned, CEP works exclusively in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we partner with, with counties across the state. So a little bit about Edwards Solar. As Lisa mentioned, it is a five-megawatt project. The largest the project can be is five megawatts. That's in our, in our conditions, and it's in our, in our interconnection agreement. That, in our site plan, we're showing 25 acres under panel. In terms of interconnection, it's connecting into the 34 KV, 34.5 KV EPCO distribution circuit that comes up Jack's Creek Road. So as I mentioned, it's not, there is those, those high-voltage transmission lines that run through the project. We are not stepping up to the, to that, to those lines, which means there's no transformer or switching station built on the site. There's just, there will be a few extra poles in the ground to take that power into that, into that distribution circuit. If, you know, we're being very, very generous, construction could start by the end of 2026. We have a lot more work to do if this permit is approved. Realistically, it would be a 20, late 2026, 2027 construction start timeline. You know, our, our landowners are here to talk, I don't want to steal their thunder, but I, I definitely want to mention that this project will be built on land that is leased and owned by Franklin County residents. They're longtime Franklin County residents, they're very, they're very proud of their, their land and their family, and what their family has done with their land, and they see this as a great opportunity to, to use their land that really hasn't been used in decades after they stopped farming it. You know, it's, as you can see, it's directly adjacent to this rock quarry. There's a cement facility directly down the road. The pipeline goes through the project. They looked at building houses, the land doesn't percolate, so they really don't have a lot of options, and they just don't, it's just not big enough parcels for them to really make a profit farming it, so they're really excited about this opportunity for their land. Yeah, as Lisa mentioned, there really is a very dense existing natural buffer. For those of y'all that have seen the site, because it was timbered, they've let it grow back up. It's really just kind of scrub, you know, some trees, some just shrubs that have grown up along this, along Jack's Creek Road. Because of that, we are completely confident that this project will not be seen, heard, smelled, anything from any adjoining parcels, residences, or businesses. It will not be, be visible from Jack's Creek Road as well. I, I do also like to mention, it's required by the county, and we're really always excited to talk about how the project, when we do plant vegetation on the project, we'll be planting native pollinators, and that's included in our, in our, in our pollinator plan that's included in the site plan. Here's just some pictures of that, that natural buffer that I was talking about. So 150 feet of that will be maintained. We were actually, when we had the planning commission on site, we were able to mark that out and show them kind of how much of that buffer was going to be maintained. It's, it's really significant when you get there and look at it. The two pictures on the left are Google Earth pictures from October of 2024. It's actually even more dense now, and that's from, the top ones from the top of the site looking down the hill, or sorry, like the middle of the site looking down the hill, and the bottom ones, the top of the site looking down. The picture on the right is standing from the bottom of the site looking up, up Jack's Creek Road. That picture I took in January, that is when, that's the thinnest that vegetation will be, that's when there's no leaves on those trees, and it's completely, you cannot see through it at all, it's completely dense. Just, we, you already got a location map, that's just an idea of where it is, kind of in relation to the quarry, and you can see Highway 40 coming across there. I'm happy to go back over the site plan if y'all want. This is the same one that Lisa just showed y'all. You can see the buffer area that's called out there. Just briefly, I mentioned it, but if this project is approved, we do have a lot more work that we have to do in terms of permitting this project. So we would start permitting process with the state. Any project below 150 megawatts has to comply with DEQ's permit by rule process. In that process, all of those state agencies will have an opportunity to weigh in on the project and give their recommendations for development. We'll have to work with, on consultation with all of those, those agencies to make sure that there's no, no, you know, state, state resources that are impacted. After that, a small project like this does not have a whole lot of steps to take with federal permitting. We will have to do a consultation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, just to make sure that there's no endangered species impacted on site. Our initial kind of consultation with them that's in your packet shows that there's no, there's no possibility of those impacts. And there also is a possibility of a permit with Army Corps of Engineers. There's a small stream, it's a spring-fed feeder stream that runs through the middle of the project. Sometimes there's water, and sometimes there's not, but it would be a, you know, a jurisdictional wetland, so we would have to work with Army Corps for a road crossing over the, over that, which is a very streamlined, simple process. It's called a nationwide permit, it's done all the time. That would be the only federal permitting we'd really need to do for this project. to do for this project. And, you know, I touched on it, but I think it's important to just, just kind of reiterate what, the different kinds of ground-mounted solar projects when we discuss these. So, there's really two main, main types of these projects. So, the first one is a transmission interconnected project. I'm sure you all have been down in Pennsylvania and Halifax and seen the larger-scale projects that have been built. You know, those projects are generating very large amounts of power, where they have substations and switching stations. They're tied into those, the big, you know, interconnection or transmission grid. That's like the superhighway of power. That power's going, you know, usually out of the county wherever it's needed. You know, there's a huge demand for power in the state, especially farther north. So, a lot of that power does go up north. You know, those projects are important. This project is a distributed generation project, which, as I mentioned, it's not, there's no substation. It's not stepping the power up to that high voltage level. The power generated will go, will be fed to the, the distribution circuit and used by homes, businesses, schools, whatever's close on that circuit, whoever needs the power when it's being generated. It's, it's, as strain and power demand continues at the, the transmission level, it's really important for distributed generation to be built. And it's really desirable by the utilities because it takes the, the strain and load off of those, those transmission lines because the power's being created and used locally. I'll, I'll touch on this briefly. So, you know, an average construction timeline for a project of this size would be about nine to 12 months. Most of that time would be the actual, like, installation of the panels and the electrification and the commissioning of the project. A pretty short period of time would actually be devoted to the civil work, just because it's a pretty small project. The, once it's in operation, it will be monitored remotely. There's no staff daily on site. So, other than maintenance visits, you know, weekly, to make sure that everything is, the grass is fine and that everything's operating. The project is operated remotely and there's not a, you know, a traffic presence every day for the project. And then, I'm happy to go into more detail with the decommissioning. I know there's already some questions about it. But, there is a very lengthy decommissioning requirement in your zoning ordinance. You know, it requires the removal of all equipment, not just the panels, all underground equipment, steel racking, even the roads. If the landowner doesn't want to keep the roads, those roads have to go. It has to be completely restored back to its original state. We have to submit plans for that full decommissioning before we can start any sort of construction as part of the site plan review. That has to be completely laid out. The method of how it's, how it will be done and how we came to those decisions of how, how we would be decommissioning it. It also, so, the bond is obviously the most important part. This is a bond that will be held by the county in perpetuity while the project is operating. That can be drawn on if the, if the project was to default on its obligations with, with the county. And the county could then decommission the project. The purpose of the bond is to be, to completely cover the amount, the cost for decommissioning, as well as administrative costs for, for carrying that out. That's very detailed spelled out in your zoning ordinance. I definitely commend y'all on that, on that very, very detailed zoning ordinance. Important to note that there is an inflation factor requirement for that bond number, as well as a five-year base, basis of review by a third party that's chosen by the county to, you know, review and make sure that those numbers are, that are held are enough to fully decommission the project. And it is in your ordinance as well that the zoning administrator can request at any time for it to be reviewed. It doesn't have to be every five years. So, at the request of the zoning administrator, it can be done more frequently. Just quickly recap what we discussed with the planning commission on our site visit and in our meeting last month. A big topic of conversation was about the panels themselves. I'll go through this briefly, but, you know, it's, I think it's really important to discuss the actual composition of the, of these panels and what they're made of. So, by weight, over 80% of silica-based solar panels are aluminum and glass. The actual solar cell material, which is about 5% by weight by, per panel, is made of silicon, which is, you know, the second most common element on Earth's crust, in Earth's crust. That is made from quartzite sandstone, a lot of its mined in Asheville, North Carolina. All that, that material, that solar material is encapsulated in tempered glass. It works like a car windshield where it doesn't shatter. It'll crack if something does hit it. It'll, it'll keep everything intact and encapsulated. One thing, you know, people do talk about what, what panels contain. It's always a big topic of conversation. Some panels do contain lead soldering. That being said, the lead soldering in those panels is about half an ounce per panel. It's, it's half the lead in a 12-gauge shotgun shell. That being said, that lead, if it is used, there are panels that are made without lead soldering. But if it is used, it is completely encapsulated in those panels and airtight from water and, and air to make sure that it's, that it's, it's not exposed. And we, there are some conditions that address that directly. And, you know, we will have to design the panels and the racking to withstand the wind, the wind loads for this area. And panels are thoroughly hail-tested to make sure that they can stand up to hail as well. A little bit more about solar, these solar panels. So, silica, monocrystalline and polycrystalline silicon solar panels are not a new technology. The first modern silica-based solar panel was made in 1954. Here's an advertisement from Bell Labs from the 50s showing this, there's, there, this technology. It's the same technology. It's just gotten better. Solar panels are used in over 4 million homes currently in the United States, as well as 7,300 schools in the U.S. There are 130 operating commercial solar facilities. A lot of them are small, like this project that we're proposing. It's not a new, there's, there's 10-year-old projects operating in the state of Virginia. It's not a new technology at this point. I think that's important to, to point out. I already went over decommissioning, but just, just wanted to point out that, you know, another big question is about recycling during decommissioning. There's just not a big demand for recycling at this point. There actually is a big reuse market for solar panels because they are still usable after their, their, their life that, that people want them for. So, there's a big second-hand market. There is available solar recycling and that industry is only going to continue to grow as there is a demand increase for solar panel recycling. And then, just briefly, on, you know, U.S.-based solar panel manufacturing. So, you know, the tariff game is not a new thing for solar panels. There have been tariffs in place for Chinese and a lot of Southeast Asian-made solar panels since 2012. You know, they've been increased and walked back and increased. You know, that bubble's already been adjusted for a while ago. A big part of that, those tariffs, and it's, and also, like, there's a lot of, there've been a lot of tax incentives for it, but domestic panel manufacturing has increased eightfold in the last five years. As of this year, we're actually producing more panels in the United States than, than there is demand for, which is, you know, it's, it's really great. There's actually a panel manufacturing facility that's starting production in July in Bedford County. I know we just, it's American and veteran-owned manufacturing facility. It's, it's, it's really exciting. We do have some conditions that are specific to the panels. As I mentioned, so there's a, there's a condition that's specific to how panels are handled on site if they are damaged. If they are damaged on site, they have to be stored in a, in a location that is completely protected from weather, wildlife, or ground contact. If panels are damaged, we have to report that to the county. And broken panels cannot be stored on site for more than 30 days. You know, usually that's enough time for an insurance claim with the manufacturer, and then they have to be off-site. And I think also what's important that I didn't mention, the other decommissioning requirement in your zoning ordinance is that there's, no panels can be disposed of in Franklin County. That's across the board with your zoning ordinance. We do have a condition about the actual manufacturing and brands of solar panels. We're a ways out from, from construction, so we haven't procured a specific manufacturer for solar panels. We do have a lot of regulations and the conditions about the specific manufacturers that we can use. So, they all have, any solar panels used in the project have to be Bloomberg NEF Tier 1 rated, which is a very, very exclusive rating system. Only usually, oh, a handful of manufacturers, manufacturers make that list every year. And then, they do also have to pass the EPA's toxicity-characteristic leaching procedure. It's administered by the EPA and it's, that's also really important to ensure there's no panels that are manufactured that, that there's a potential for groundwater leaching.
Excuse me?
Oh, yes, sir.
On those panels, the Bloomberg panel, is that American-made and is it?
So, it doesn't have to be. There's, there's, there's some companies that, like, Canada Solar is also, we'll get that certification. There's some Southeast Asian manufacturers that can make that, that certification.
It's just a standard you're saying.
But it's, there, it is, it's a very difficult standard. There has to be, you have, there has to be lots of projects developed with using those panels. They have to be completely bankable, meaning lots of projects have financed those panels and they have to be, you know, they have to have, it's, there's a lot of, a lot of requirements for it. So, yeah, there's...
Does that say, I mean, does that say it's a silicon panel? Is that what you're...
There's no, there's no specific requirements for that. I know, there, I'm assuming you're asking about like cadmium telluride panels. There's one manufacturer, it's First Solar that makes those panels. We're not, you know, we're not proposing to use those, those panels. They, they're really the only company that makes them. Even if we wanted to use them, they have a really long backlog because they, a lot of them are made in the United States. So, a lot of people line up to, to purchase them, but we're not planning on using cadmium telluride panels. We're planning on using silica-based panels.
Thank you.
And I'll be brief on this as well. Lisa already went through this, but there are a lot of conditions on the, you know, stormwater management and erosion control requirements. It's a big topic of discussion currently in, in the industry. You know, projects that, solar projects in Virginia that have erosion and runoff problems were, you know, poorly designed and they took shortcuts on erosion and stormwater measures. The DEQ has actually updated their stormwater handbook this year. And they, the DEQ feels that if it is followed correctly, all of those problems will, will be fixed. Essentially, what, what that, that new handbook requires is these projects have to be designed as completely impervious now. So, it's like you have to, you have to design your, your modeling. You have to model and design your, your erosion control and stormwater management as if you were building a parking lot. There, it's, so, it's a lot more emphasis on, on that, that control. Specifically about our project, there is, there are two spring-fed tributaries near the project site. One, as I mentioned, runs through the middle of the site. We are agreeing to following these new DEQ standards. We will be very far away from these, from, from all of these water features. We'll be completely avoiding all wetlands, streams, and flood zones, except for the one culvert road crossing that I mentioned. Yeah, so, the other thing that I, that I, I need to mention would be the, the benefits of a small project when it comes to this, this design. You know, small projects like this are really not, have not been the culprit when it comes to problems with erosion and stormwater. That, the reason being, the civil work is done much faster and the project can be stabilized much quicker. So, you design your, your measures, your stormwater measures and your erosion measures, and you just have a very low risk of any sort of large rain event that will, that will override your, your measures. These projects can be stabilized much quicker. I, I won't go through these, but these are the conditions. Lisa mentioned a lot of them that directly require, you know, a, a lot of work with, with, before and during construction involving stormwater and erosion control. There's, there's a lot of bonds that will be, that have to be held by the project, both during construction and in operation, as well as a, what I think is really important, you know, the condition 29 requires a dedicated stormwater, stormwater management and erosion control manager who is responsible for daily inspections and weekly reports with planning staff for Franklin County. So, there's constant communication between the, the developer and, and the county on, on how those, those measurements are being followed. Lisa mentioned, we did add a soil testing condition as well, after some discussion with the planning commission. Basically, there'll be some baseline tests during construction. And then, as the project is in operation, the, the soil will be tested regularly and those tests will be reported back to Franklin County, just to ensure that there's nothing, you know, there's nothing coming up from those, from those soil tests. I'll pivot here really quickly to some economic benefits from the project. So, we had an economic benefit study done for the project and we are anticipating over $2 million in economic benefits from the project, over the lifecycle of the project. That includes the direct upfront payment from the project and, and the revenue share agreement that's in the conditions for the project. And that itself is 116-time increase in the revenue from the county, based on, on what the project, the project land would be generating if it was not developed. So, a little bit about the work that we've done in the community. So, we're a Virginia-based company, as I mentioned. We, we really take that very seriously and we spend a lot of time engaging with the community. We've been working on this project for a long time now. We, we directly engage with all the neighbors of the project. You know, we mailed out lots of information on the project to all the adjoining landowners. We door-knocked. We met with all of the, the neighbors that lived around the project to make sure they understood what we were working on. A lot of the landowners surrounding the project are not local. A lot of they're just, they're just large vacant properties. So, we made a lot of phone calls and had conversations with landowners as well that are not local, local to the county. We did hold a community meeting right before we submitted our application. So, that was in January. We had it at the Glade Hill Volunteer Fire Department. It's a very nice facility. On January, you know, we, and we used that community meeting, the conversations we had at the community meeting, as well as our, our engagement with those, those neighbors and, and, you know, community landowners to really inform and, and develop our, our project site plan, to make sure that, that nobody is going to be impacted, you know, visually from the project. We also gave presentations to both Rotary Clubs, the Rocky Mountain, Smith Mountain Lake Rotary Club, just continuing to spread awareness about the project and what we're working on. We're also members of the Smith Mountain Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce. We're also really proud of our community benefits program that we have for the project. We, we do this for all of our projects across the state. We focus on contributing to public health and safety, food insecurity or security, economic development, environmental sustainability, and educational opportunities in the counties that we work in. You know, we obviously believe in building meaningful relationships, not just during this development and construction period of these projects, but that will last for the lifetime of the project. So, just specifically what we've worked on here in Franklin County. We've, we've partnered for a while now with STEP. You know, we've, we've really enjoyed meeting with them and visiting their facility. And we've, we've actually been able to support them to help, you know, them, help them combat food and housing insecurity. You know, STEP is an institution to the community, so we're, we're very happy to be working with them. You know, we're also partnering with recreational development in Franklin County. They were here earlier speaking. We're going to be, we're going to be working to help support the Equestrian Center that they're working on. We're also working with both Rotary Clubs on their initiatives, you know, countywide. We are sponsoring the upcoming Independence Festival. We're very excited about that. We also take a lot of pride in our education. You know, commitments that we make specifically here. We've been working with Life's Academy on some STEM opportunities. We partner with a great organization at JMU called the Center for the Advancement of Sustainable Energy. They provide, you know, STEM solar kits where, you know, it goes to very young ages. They can, they can use these kits and get, get some STEM education and learn about, learn about solar energy. That's what I have for y'all today. Sorry, that was pretty detailed, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have. And thanks for the opportunity.
Anybody got any questions for?
I'm gonna grab my water.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, could you speak, speak briefly to the co-location of Mountain Valley Pipeline and your project?
Sure.
With the follow-up addressing condition 24 put forth by the planning commission concerning emergency access, response, and training, as that correlates with an incident involving Mountain Valley Pipeline and your project?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So, we, we are on both sides of Mountain Valley Pipeline. If you notice on the site plan, we have two dedicated accesses that we're proposing. So, there'll be no road crossing or any, or anything going across the Mountain Valley Pipeline. The only thing that would actually be crossing it would be a collector, low-voltage collector line to collect, collect the power between the two arrays on north and south. You know, the pipeline is 34 inches in diameter, 34 to 46 inches in diameter. It's buried. There's already existing high-voltage electrical above it. There's the same 34.5 kV line crosses that we're going to be tapping into, crosses north to south over it. There's homes directly east of us that are just as close as our panels would be to the pipeline. It's, you know, it's our opinion that there's already been a precedent set that developing around the pipeline is safe. And we do have a contact with the pipeline. And as we continue working on, on developing the project, we'll, we'll be working with them on any right-of-way concerns. Specifically to the, the emergency response plan, we do have to submit a very detailed emergency response plan before we can start construction, before we get our site plan approved. We have a great relationship with the Glade Hill Volunteer Fire Department, the Chief, Stephen David. We've met with him a lot. We've gotten to know him very, very well. If that's something that we, you feel like we need to specifically address, we, we haven't at this point, but we could absolutely include that and specifically address, you know, work with the, with the pipeline to make sure that there's, if there are any, I'm not aware of any, but if there are any, like, additional precautions or procedures for working around that, that they need to be followed, we can absolutely add that into the, into the plan.
I got one question that is a concern to me. I'm retired also. We used to go down there, the Jack's Mountain, at the house right across from interest scoring up into Jack's Mountain. When they died... When they dynamited. And a couple of times it broke some glass, you know, the rocks come out, knocked pictures off the walls and all of that. I'm concerned, when I read in there that y'all were going to inspect once or twice a month. If they go down there and dynamite and some panels get broke. Have you given any thoughts of that? Have you talked to those folks?
So we have, they came to our community meeting and we have, we have spoken with the quarry. They have no concerns with the project. There are solar facilities in the state that have been built much closer to rock quarries. In Beelton, there's a luckstone quarry. Dominion owns a solar facility that's, that's much closer than our project would be. We're totally on the other side of the mountain from it. We, we feel that we're, it's not a concern how far away we are. We do have to get insurance for these, for these projects and that underwriting process is very strenuous. If the insurer feels like there is a concern, they, they want more testing done, then they would be covered with that. But we don't feel that there's any, any concern right now with that.
My concern, my concern is what I'm talking about. You only come down there once or twice and say it's a, a week before you come down there. Is there any, any kind of damage, a leak in panel or something can cause?
Sure, yes, sure. The panel, they are remotely monitored 24/7. If the, if the panels are damaged, there will be an immediate drop in production. We'd know that there's something wrong. It would be, someone would visit the site and, and see what was going on much more frequently in that case.
Okay.
Yeah, there's. Yes, absolutely. Because at that point, we're not making power and we're, it's, we're out of, we'll be out of our, you know, agreements with the utility, so.
Okay, I understand that. Anyone else got any questions? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I have, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm not sure the terminology, but as part of Virginia's strive to get away from fossil fuels, there, each power company, Dominion AEP, has to meet a certain percentage of non-fossil energy in, in by a certain year. Do you have any idea, Paul, what percentage this project would contribute towards that?
It would be a, a pretty small percentage. It's, it's five megawatts, so it is, it is definitely, it would, it would help towards that. AEP has a lot longer of a, a lead time than Dominion does to procure that. They did actually just put out a, their newest RFP to procure power and they, they are looking at projects this size. So they are certainly interested in projects this size. As I mentioned though, they're, it's not, they're not necessarily interested in these kind of projects because of the, you know, they're not adding a huge chunk of megawatts to those requirements. They are however easing that, that demand at the transmission level with power being made locally on the distribution circuit. There's less of a draw from this transmission line. So that's, that's another big reason why these projects, these smaller projects are, are popping up and being, being sought after.
Any more questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Do you have anybody else here from your staff that needs to speak? Y'all covered everything. Are there, is there, anyone here, Lisa, on the landowners that want to talk? Huh?
I think Amy has the list.
Well, that, she's got a list for when we go into public hearing. Have you got anybody from the, from the property owners that, that's on this list that wants to speak?
Yes, Penny Blue is a property owner.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi. Name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Penny Edwards Blue in Union Hall, Virginia. I believe, and I think most people in Franklin County believe in landowners' rights. A large portion of this land has been in my family since the turn of the 18th century. My grandfather purchased this property as an investment for our family's future. For many years, my grandfather and father farmed this land while traveling to and from West Virginia, like many farmers in this area, to make ends meet. After working for 19 years in the coal mines, marrying my mother, and moving back home, and while continuing to farm and raise a family of 10 children, my dad and my mom both each worked three additional jobs outside of the home. They did this while continuing to farm and hold onto this land so that I could get an education and take advantage of how to use this land during my lifetime. There is no one that knows the meaning of this land more than I do. However, as many Franklin Countyans know, farming was not enough to take care of our families then and is not enough to take care of our families now. This project helps with Franklin County's desire to maintain its rural character and scenic views as well as to provide new job opportunities for its citizens. The solar farm is located off the main roads and well-hidden naturally from Jack's Creek Road by the line of trees that border the property. It is located in an industrial area mostly traveled by large trucks going to and from the rock quarry, asphalt plant, and the energy right-of-way that runs through the property. And because it is adjacent to the rock quarry, it does not perk. I believe in economic development, strategies, and zoning. And as the Planning Development Department states, the landowners should be a part of those decisions. And it, and this, we believe, is the best use for this property. The solar farm will allow our farm to continue to contribute to caring for our family and, and will provide millions of dollars of revenue for the county, adding to the support of our schools, our sheriff's department, our first responders, and even to the housing and tourism development. Therefore, our request tonight for the Board of Supervisors is to follow the direction of your Planning Commission that you appointed to direct the short and long-term range growth and development of this county based on the county's strategic plans, rules, and regulations to vote a resounding yes to the Edward Solar Project. A few quotes that I've heard thrown around from the Planning Commission staff and the Planning Commission is, "This is the perfect place for a solar farm in Franklin County." If the Board of Supervisors does not approve this solar project in Franklin County, they are not going to approve any. And that is because, as the Franklin County Planning and Community Website states, "Great communities don't just happen. They are the result of a series of good decisions made over time by a diverse and committed group of people, all pulling in the same direction." Thank you.
Penny, could I ask you a question? I didn't understand what you said because it's adjacent to the quarry it won't. Did you say perk?
Like when we get people to come out and try to perk the land to build things? It doesn't perk well.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
I believe there's another property owner, Ruby Penn.
Good evening. I'm Ruby Penn, Union Hall, Virginia, or Ruby Edwards Penn. All three of the property owners are in attendance. My brother Ronnie Edwards, my sister Penny Blue, but only Penny and I are going to be speaking. I grew up in Union Hall and worked on my family's farm, which included working and tobacco on some of the land we now want to use as a solar farm. Change is inevitable. Change can be good when it helps the community. My grandfather and father were what I call true farmers. They worked until the land and sold and used the crops. I, on the other hand, vowed I would never farm again in my life. However, I am proud to be a co-owner of the land in question and look forward to working with CEP Solar in their endeavor to bring solar power to our community as well as assistance supporting us in other areas to help our community grow. I understand that some people are questioning the impact of solar farms on our agriculture and tourist industry. I'm delighted to say that we have no intentions of using this property for agricultural purposes in the future and it is a great spot that will not be an eyesore to the tourists because of its location. No one loves the beauty of nature more than I. And even though it is close to my home, the panels will be hidden by natural and planted growth. Therefore, I am asking for you, like the Planning Commission, to give us your unanimous support in this project. In closing, I want to thank Mr. Quinn for the very positive interview that he did on Channel 7 yesterday, giving the project a thumbs up. I sincerely hope that the rest of the board members see how valuable this project is to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else here that's a landowner or anything that wants to talk? All right, that, that being said, I'm gonna go and open up the, uh...
Reba Dillon.
I don't have that on. All right, I'm opening up the public comment.
This is my final time I'm gonna stand before y'all. I only have two points to make.
I need you to state your name and address, please, for the record.
Do what?
Yeah, I do. Sorry.
My name is Reba Dillon and I live in West Virginia.
Yes, ma'am.
And, but I only have two points to make. Because I spoke so strongly against the last solar farm project, I felt it necessary to speak on this one. And on this one, I am asking you all to compare. The first one was not on prime, it was on prime farmland. It was in the middle of a subdivision that had the homes all the way around it and it also had two main roads that had to look at it. This location is on a back road. It's not going to interfere with anyone surrounding it. So I only have one question. I want you all to ask yourself, does this project harm the environment? And does this project harm the neighbors around it? Do we have the right to deny these people the right to make a living on their farm? And I've heard it said many times, if a man works hard, he pays for his land and it's not bothering the people or the environment, he should be able to use it to make a living. Thank you.
Is Rain Pacor here? That's all I have.
What was that last name, please?
It was Rain Pacor.
Rainy Pacor?
She's not here.
She's not here? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak toward this Edward Solar Farm project? If so, please come forward. All right, with that being said, we'll go back into closed session. And board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a couple of comments, Ronnie. So this solar farm SUP follows all of the Board of Supervisor established rules and criteria for solar farms. Plus it has 35 conditions to improve county protection and prosperity. As a sidebar, I believe these conditions will serve as a template for future solar farms and I applaud the Planning Department for developing these conditions along with a thorough review completed by the Planning Commission to ensure the conditions are comprehensive. In my opinion, the location is perfect. It's in an industrial area, near an asphalt plant and quarry. There's limited visibility from the road, which will be shielded with vegetation screen, and there are few neighbors. For me, an SUP is a zoning variance and as such, land use rights must be weighed against neighbor opposition. In this case, there is no neighbor opposition, only constituent support. So for me, the land use rights prevail. I'm sensitive to the Farm Bureau's concern about losing farmland since the landowners stated they have no plans or desires to farm this section. The solar farm will not take farmland out of service. Additionally, the decommissioning plans will return this section to its current status. The potential alternative uses are, are logging and farming and those uses are not subject to erosion control regulations, while the solar farm is subject to significant erosion control regulations. And as a, a side note, this water that, that runs off this property goes into Jack's Creek and over a mile of Jack's Creek flows through my farm. So I have a keen interest in protecting the water in that area. The State Board is considering taking over local decision-making to develop solar farm sites. Denying this SUP, one that's in a perfect location and complies with all the rules, would give the State Board ammunition to remove our authority since we are demonstrating that we will make the approval process nearly impossible. The Planning Commission evaluated this SUP and unanimously voted to approve it. While this decision is not binding on the Board of Supervisor, it weighs heavily on my decision, knowing it was well-vetted. This site will increase property tax revenue while not increasing the draw on local services. And then lastly, I attended a seminar on solar farms and solar panels and there I learned that there are two types, the silica panels, which are proposed for this project, and the newer cadmium telluride panels that have a component that could be problematic if it leaks into the environment. So I'm very happy to hear there's silica panels. In fact, I would like to add another condition, just requiring these, so it's spelled out very clearly. Those are all my comments.
Anyone else got anything they want to say?
Mr. Chairman, I visited the site a while back. I'm not a big fan of solar, y'all know my thoughts on it already, but this is, if we're going to put a solar panel in Franklin County, this is the perfect spot for it. And that's, that's all we're gonna say.
Anyone else? Got anything to say? I told Ms. Blue when she called me that I didn't make up my mind until we come to a public hearing, that I wanted to hear what, so far tonight I hadn't heard anything negative that anybody wanted to add. And I'll have to say that, in my opinion, for myself, it's your land, you bought and paid for it, you can do what you want to with it. Now, I know a lot of people don't agree with me on that, but that's how I feel about it. And if, where this piece of property is, I'll have to agree with my colleagues here, where it's at, I mean, th- this piece of land is, I'm not gonna say it's out in the middle of nowhere, but it's, it's out there far enough, it's out there far enough that if we're gonna do a solar farm, that's gonna be a place to do it because it is way out there. So that's, that's my comment on that. So with that being said, board, what's your pleasure? I need a motion in a second.
I'd make a motion. I find that the use will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby and that such use will be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the county code with uses permitted by right in the zoning district and with the public health, safety, and general welfare to the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for a 5-megawatt utility-scale solar generation facility as recommended by the Planning Commission in accordance with the 35 conditions. And I would add a, a 36 condition, just confirming that the panels will be made of silica.
All right, you got a second?
Second.
We got two or three seconds there. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Smith?
No.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right. Okay, we've reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comment. Public comment gives citizens an opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibility of the board. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes for their comments. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as to the board or county. Personal attacks and insulting, profane, or vulgar language, vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of the local government is not a question and answer, will not be accepted. Public comment session is not a question and answer. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order and upon second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, do you have anybody signed up for this?
Catherine Champney.
Ma'am, if you'll come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Can we ask for five minutes? Is that possible? Since it's for a whole group?
Huh?
We're representing a whole group.
Well, one person can speak for five minutes.
Right, okay.
But, but five or six people's not gonna get to speak for five minutes.
No, 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 there's just two of us speaking. And we were gonna split the five.
No, no, one person can speak for five. No, no, one person can speak for five minutes. You choose which one's gonna be.
Okay, let's go. Can we do five? Perfect, thank you. Rebecca Saunders?
Okay, you're just gonna be the one, right?
Yep. These are my support group.
Y'all can have a seat over there.
Perfect. Rebecca Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Fairham, Virginia. So I'm here to give you guys an update on Fairham Park. I am very thankful, first off, for your support. Back in October, we finished with our signing over the property, and so we've had the property since October. So we wanted to update you all on what we've done since then. So in the past eight months, we have been able to develop infrastructure, so trail development. Our farm and craft market is now fully ADA accessible. We have built a storage shed, which has a stage, so that way folks can come around and play their music. We also have a primitive group camping area that we've been developing. As you can see here, these are the trails. A lot of them are the old roadbeds that had been there, but we actually worked with Fairham College, and they helped develop a whole new one-mile trail. As you can see here, we did upgrades to make the farmer's market fully ADA accessible. And as you can see here, it's also beautiful. We have worked on conservation, so a big part of our plan for the park is to maintain the natural setting. A big part of that is that we use the information provided to us by folks like Bob Polad, Dave Johnson from the college, to help us determine where to put in amenities, so that way we're not impacting anything negatively. A lot of the stuff we've done has been in areas where there was no developed flora or fauna, and we have worked really, really hard to make sure areas like this, that you see here, that have the historic aspects, are preserved. Part of our plan in the future is to work with a brim to take some of these and create an interpretive trail on our history. So in the past eight months, we have worked with doing events at Rocky Mount Fest, Folk Life, our Trick or Treat Trail, the Holiday Craft Bazaar, Escape the Park. We did flea markets, flatfoot dance competitions, bingo, and pancake breakfast, and First Fridays. So these are some photos from our first, or our flatfoot dance. We also did a mare competition, so we have, no offense to anybody here on the Board, we have an honorary mare at Fairham now, which is Kenny Hale. That was actually really fun.
How come you're not on our team?
Nobody nominated him, I'm sorry, Tim. We also did Pancake Breakfast with the Lions Club, and then we started hosting a First Friday Senior Learning Series, where folks come and learn about different topics. One of our favorite, biggest things we do is the second annual Trick or Treat Trail. That was last year. This year, the third is gonna be even bigger and better. Students from Callaway and Fairham Elementary and the PTOs there worked with us to create a Trick or Treat Trail. As you can see, people set up along the trails, and the students go around and collect candy from each station. It's actually really, really fun. In the past eight months, we've received support and supported local organizations, including Fairham Forward, the Lions Club, Phoebe Needles, the college, Fairham and Callaway Elementary PTOs, the Fire Department, and St. James Community Center. In the past eight months, volunteers from Fairham College created a one-mile-long hiking trail, they helped build our storage shed, and they helped with planning with different amenities throughout the park. So, an important thing that I think everybody needs to understand is that our volunteers have spent over five hundred hours a month, so sit with that for a minute, five hundred hours a month on projects, from cleaning up, to building, to applying for grants, you name it. We've worked with local homeschool groups to provide unique and fun learning experiences. Thank you, Dr. Polad. And then we did the Southwest Virginia Alternative Living Festival. This was a day-long event with fifteen speakers and demonstrators, thirty vendors, and as you can see, forty-five percent of the attendees came from outside of Franklin County. That's huge. We have the Fairham Farm and Craft Market every Thursday and the second Saturday of every month. Of that, we have a hundred and eighty shoppers, sixteen vendors, and fifteen hundred generated each week for vendors at the market. Here's kids creating their own playground, until we can get the infrastructure in. We also have the livestock swap. So all of that, to be said, that tomorrow there will be a major announcement that we have been awarded a national grant. We're extremely excited about that. Franklin County and Fairham Park will be featured in National Magazine. So, to that, what am I asking for? We currently have twenty-five thousand dollars ready to be invested in our campground project, and we are using this chance to ask you guys to consider helping us invest even more in the park. So what we need is infrastructure, water, sewer, and electric. Sorry, it went over. I just wanna say thank you all again.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you got anyone else signed up?
That's all I have.
Anyone else here wish to speak to something going on here in the county? All right, with that being said, I'll close the public comments. All right, now, I'm gonna go back, go back, we need to go back to where we left off earlier, before we went, before we went into public comments and everything. Let's go back, Mr. Quinn, you got any, you got anything to report?
I don't think that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Whitlow?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items here. If you all recall, last month was EMS Appreciation Month. In fact, EMS Appreciation Week is May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, and I know many of you were able to get over to the Franklin Center. Our Public Safety Department, of course, honored our career and volunteer staff on those luncheons, appreciate all of you that were able to come out for that. Earlier this month, we were reminded that the significant roles that the EMS providers play in our county every day, and I think you all may have received a communication, but just to acknowledge that, at a recent biking event over at Wade Park, there was a situation with a user of the park with a fairly significant medical emergency. And so, from that, our responders, Becky Ayers, Jacob Bush, and Devin Fouts, they responded, and it's certainly to their credit, due to their swift and professional action, that that ended up in being a great save for that individual, and also with the assistance with a UTV provided by the Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department. So, we certainly wanted to reach out. That's just one example. Every day, or as you all know, our team is out there, both career and volunteer, and so a shout-out to everyone from our Public Safety Director, but also from county staff. And so, Mr. Chairman, a couple of other things in terms of appreciation for county employees. There will be a summer lunch, Employee Appreciation Event, and we'll share this with you all again. It's coming up next month, July twenty-third, barbecue and all the fixins. It's gonna be over at the Franklin County Essex Center and the Recreation Center there, and that's eleven-thirty to two. Couple of other updates, we recently, following the purchase of the Majocraft property for the proposed CTE facility, we have filed the appropriate zoning application with the town of Rocky Mount. There is an upcoming Planning Commission meeting with the Town Planning Commission on July first, and the council to follow on July the fourteenth. And so we are working with our team, as well as our consulting engineer, to work through that presentation and that concept plan, working with our school system. And we have scheduled a July twenty-second CTE summit with the school board and with you, the Board of Supervisors, that will kick off at the Franklin Center in the morning, approximately nine o'clock. We will load buses, eight forty-five, maybe-ish, eight-thirty, Danny's saying Danny's moving it up, eight-thirty, eight forty-five, we've got a big day. We will travel down to the Manufacturing Engineering and Technology Center, which is the CTE facility for Henry County in Martinsville, located in the Patriot Center Industrial Park. It's a good example of what we're looking to do there at the Majocraft property. Of course, all folks will be invited, the town council, others, the school board, Board of Supervisors, and then we will be joined at a lunchtime speaker, scheduled is the Virginia Secretary of Labor, Mr. Slater. So, we're excited to hear, it's very timely for this event. So more information on that, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. And that's all I have currently in terms of updates. As, just a reminder to the Board, we do have that Capitol Work Session next Tuesday, Mr. Chairman, at two o'clock. Davenport will be with us to walk us through the interim financing on some of the Capitol projects, and we'll have some more time during that work session just to review some of our Capitol projects. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
On that, next Tuesday, just since on the Board, I won't be there. I'm gonna be on vacation. We have, every year for the last numerous years, my whole family, we've gotten together and gone to Atlantic Beach, and next week happens to be the end of the week, so I'll be down there with my family. My family's getting smaller all the time, just like everybody else, I'm sure, so we won't be there with that. Okay, any other matters by Supervisors? Just talk down on that end.
Just one quick comment. I was able to attend the Antique Farm Days on Saturday morning for the grand opening, and that's a great event, and I got to speak just briefly to the crowd, and a man came up to me afterwards that had driven up here from Georgia, and he bought a steam tractor, and he said, "I just wanna know what your county does to get your local government so involved with this event." He said, "I'm so proud to see you stand up there and what happened Friday," and he said, "That doesn't occur in my county, so tell me what you all do differently, so I can go back and tell my county." I said, "Well, you need to elect some different people." But he was very complimentary of the event, and Franklin County, it was really a nice event.
Cool.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Yes, sir.
You?
Um, no, I'm good.
I have a couple items. So, last year, 2024, the Western Virginia Water Authority funded a sewer study for the Union Hall designated growth area that concluded last year, and the next steps were to get a preliminary engineering review and a soil test done. Western Virginia Water Authority, with Steve's support, applied for a grant to SIRCAP, and yesterday that grant was approved for fifty-three thousand dollars, which will fully fund the PER and the soil test. So that was, that was great news for, for us. Secondly, I wanted to give you a report. Keith Gardner is a member of the Union Hall Village Working Group, and he has volunteered to help in the area of cell, and not just for the Union Hall District, but for the whole county, and so he's in the process of taking in inventory, and that inventory would be of tower locations, and also antennas that are on those towers, who owns the towers, all the details that you might want, even taking pictures about the towers. So I'm just reporting in that Keith is actually making progress on this for the benefit of the whole county. Next, the South Lake Community Market opened May twenty-second. They switched their hours from four to seven to nine to twelve in the morning. I was a little concerned that you would lose the working crowd, but so far, it's even been more successful. Last year, they've had seventeen vendors, and this way, they don't have to deal with the heat and the thunderstorms, and people that couldn't sell stuff like mushrooms and flowers because it was just too hot, they've come back and they're selling. So, so, so everything is, it's perfect. I'm just very happy that it's all working out. Next, the grant application was submitted for the church. They've applied for five hundred thousand dollars. That would fund the entire project, purchasing the land, the total restoration of the church, like A to Z, everything would be covered if they get that. So that should be awarded sometime in July. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is, we had, we've had a couple, well, many meetings with the Farm Bureau where they've complained about crop damage, and at the last meeting, I agreed to take this up on behalf of our Board with a DWR. DWR had an open comment period, and, and I made a plea to them in writing to seek help in this area. I, I looked at extending the archery season and making it antlerless only, but they took it even a step further, and they've now, I just learned yesterday, they have increased the firearm season from four weeks to seven weeks in Franklin County. So, I, I'm a little concerned about what that'll do to the antlered buck population, but, but it's a huge step, and I think the Farm Bureau should be very happy with that. So that's it.
Dean?
Just, I just wanted to comment on our friends from Fairham Park, and just tell you that if any of you get an opportunity on Thursdays to ride up there, the work that they're doing is impressive. I have to hand it to them. You know, last fall, listening to some of their plans, I was thinking to myself, "Well, I hope you can," and more power to you, but eh, but I gotta, I gotta take my hat off to them. They have done some remarkable work, and, and it seems to be growing every week, and you know, that, the enthusiasm hasn't slacked off any. It's, it's been impressive, and, and they are extremely thankful to this Board for giving them that opportunity, and I just wanted to relay that to everyone.
Good, good. All right, I want to, I already told you this one time, but I wanna bring it back up with Dale Simmons and DND Arena. It's down off of Brooks Mill Road. Dale's the one that was here a while ago with the farm things. It's July the eleventh and the twelfth. The starting time is at, actually at eight o'clock, but if you want to ride in the Grand Marshall and the Grand Parade, we need to be there around six o'clock, between six and six-thirty. Now, there's gonna be a band there on Friday night to play music, that's probably gonna be bluegrass, and then there's gonna be some food trucks there also. And if you'd like to have a count, if, if you wanna call me and let me know if you're gonna go, so we'll know, and if you wanna ride in the wagon, or if you wanna ride a horse, let me know there on, on what you wanna do there. Or if, I'll call, maybe, if Amy don't mind, you can call and let her know, and I need to give Dale a count, so we can know. Yeah, I'm gonna ride a horse.
You're looking at me, Rodney.
Oh, are you gonna ride a horse?
Yeah.
No.
Why? I thought you said you was gonna volunteer to run your plan.
It was a day.
Oh, my God!
You wanna ride one of them bulls in?
No, I don't! No!
You scared?
My two artificial hips won't let me. I have an excuse.
It's pick-on Lori time.
It is pick-on Lori time.
Well, you participate in the mutton busting later on.
What's that mean?
You got a rascal sheep down.
Oh, my God! Y'all are just not good for my...
You ever been to a goat roach?
No! No!
What have you ever done in your life? You sure have lived a shelter life.
Lori, think what that would do for the attendance at the fair.
Do what?
Think what that would do for the attendance at the fair.
You want me to take one for the team?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You quit laughing, Nick Mitchell.
Take one for the team.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just not a farm girl.
Well, they can take money out of the Supervisors' money and buy you a cowgirl outfit.
Shut up.
I can get you a head anyway.
Get you a head.
Get you a head anyway. All right, I gotta do something here now that I don't wanna do, but I got to do it. I have served eight years, just a tad, over eight years, active duty in Reserve in the United States Coast Guard. I've been on the Police Department for thirty-four years. That was full-time and part-time. Most of it, over thirty years, was full-time in law enforcement. And this December will be sixteen years on the Franklin County Board of Supervisors. And four of those was as Chairman, three of them anyway, three of them anyway. I talked to a friend of mine in Roanoke County who was a real good friend, Jim, you probably know him. He's Judge Apostol, a General District Court Judge. And he, he retired when he was sixty. And I asked him one day, I said, "Judge, why are you retiring when you're so, at sixty years old with the job you got?" And this was his answer. He said, "Ronnie, it's a wise man that knows when it's time to stop, just like when it's time to start." And he said, "Always stop when you're on top of your game." Now, you might argue with me on whether I'm on top of my game or not, but ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna stop. This past year has really woke me up. I got a new lease on life. Two of my kids threatened to disown me if I went back again. My wife, one of my boys, and my sister said they would back me in whatever I chose to do. But I think that I'm at a place in my life that I need to do some more traveling. I've been to all fifty states. I've driven in every one of them. I did not drive to Alaska, but I drove... I did not drive to Alaska, but I drove, I mean, I did not drive to Hawaii, but I drove while I was in Hawaii. I did drive to Alaska twice. I did drive to Alaska twice, and it woke me up. It woke me up, and I've lived a good life, and I wanna live some more. And I think that if I were to run four more years, if I haven't paid my dues to society in the years that I've done, four more years is not gonna make any difference. I know of a couple of people that have, that are gonna run for the Boone District. I've talked to them. When this one guy makes his announcement, then I'll tell you who I'm gonna back, but at that time, I'm gonna wait until they make their announcement. So, it's with, I appreciate the support that you all have given me, and it has been a pleasure. The one thing that I will say, and I'm gonna shut up about it, you have to be zealous for your district. Listen to me. That's important. You have to be zealous for your district. That's what you've been elected for. But don't forget, your district's in Franklin County, and every decision you make envelops the entire county, and you have to be mindful of the whole county, and that's all I'm gonna say. With that being said, Ms. Lori, will you read? We're gonna go in closed session. We've got some stuff that we didn't get to do. We're gonna go back into closed session and do that, and then we'll, we've got some appointments to make.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors enter into a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel discussion of appointments to county boards, commissions, et cetera, A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property, A5, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, A29, discussion of the terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Second. Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?